Roll call?
Chris Marks.
Steve McConnell.
Milin Thai.
Christine Chu.
Karen Watson.
Tim Mills.
Okay, um, please join us for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, so we're gonna begin with looking at the agenda, and I have a couple of items to bring up for that. The first one is pretty straightforward. I would like to remove, um, eight-five from the agenda because we didn't receive materials until the last minute, and I want to make sure that, that I and the rest of the board have time to look at that and also consult with staff to get some more feedback on, on things there. So, we would still be able to, to look at that, and it doesn't affect us for the next two meetings.
Sounds good.
Okay, great, so we'll move that one to next time. Uh, next thing is that we have, um, more, more comments than we have time for, and our policy says that we need to approve whether or not we want to take more than ten minutes of comments. So we have six...
Thirty minutes.
No, ten, if our agenda goes all the way to, and did I misread the policy?
If we remove eight point five, our agenda doesn't go all the way to the end.
Oh, that's true. So, is everyone okay with taking all six comments? Is that alright? Great, then we're set, that works. Are there any other issues for the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Eight point six, uh, we have, this meeting's not that long, but we have a really long week in addition to this meeting. If we could cut that down to fifteen minutes, that would be great.
Why don't we, when it comes up, when eight point six comes up, we'll start with fifteen, and then if there's an issue, we'll go further. Cause it's, we have to...
Yeah.
Yeah, does that work for everyone?
Just see if we can start with fifteen, so we're not stuck in there for thirty minutes, because we said we were gonna be in executive session for thirty minutes, that'd be great.
I agree.
Okay, great, so that's set. And, alright, anything else on the agenda? Then we're all gonna go ahead with the agenda as amended, and I'm gonna take us to a Washington State Retirees Association recognizing all school employee, retired employees. I'm just gonna read it, it's a very brief proclamation, and I want to recognize all the people who've given us service. So, "Whereas the Washington State School Retirees Association recognizes all retired school employees, and whereas the Washington State School Retirees Association educates and assists retirees in meeting and, meeting in the special challenges retirement brings and works to improve their general welfare, and whereas the WSR, SRA aids in advancing education by supporting high educational standards, and whereas the WSSRA promotes group and individual involvement in charitable projects and activities, sponsors scholarships, and maintains interest and participation in educational and community activities, and whereas the WSSRA supports and encourages retired educators to remain active in the education profession throughout volunteer activities associated with learning. Now therefore, J. Inzley, this, I, the Governor of the State of Washington, do hereby proclaim March thirteenth through nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, as School Retirees Appreciation Week in Washington, and I urge all people in our state to join me in this special observance." So that is that. And I have another announcement, um, but I don't see it in here. I thought that it was gonna be included. So, I will give us a little preview, and then I'll give a formal piece of information at the end, but I want to recognize that there is an, uh, an outside group that Tim was awarded their superintendent award, or their administrator award for the year. So I will get the formal information about that ready and tell everyone about it. But while everyone's here, I did want to recognize that he's got another honor that was come at voluntary, the voluntary application of some of our employees who really wanted to point them out from our certified group of employees. So, just to acknowledge that, Tim, congratulations. Sorry, I don't have the info with me in front of me. Alright, so, um, that takes us to public comments. So I have a statement to read, and then...
We have approved the consent agenda.
Oh, I apologize, you're right, I just skipped the consent agenda. Anything that people wanted to pull out from consent agenda to discuss? Any issues? Okay, um, can I have a motion to accept?
I move we accept the consent agenda.
Okay.
Second it.
Alright, any discussion? All in favor of accepting the consent agenda?
Aye.
Alright, so that's done. That takes us to public comment. I will read this, and then we'll begin with our first two. First, "If you would like to address the board on an issue, please limit your remarks to not more than three minutes. To maximize the number of comments we can hear, please use only the time you need to make your statement. If you are here with a group, the board encourages the group to appoint a spokesperson. You may provide written documentation to the board secretary to be included as part of the official board minutes. The board will listen to all comments carefully, but will generally not respond to comments spontaneously or without further deliberation. Complaints about specific personnel will not be heard in open session. And the board also accepts public comments submitted online and will include such comments in the official meeting minutes for the next regular board meeting following receipt of the comments." So with that said, I'd like to invite Congregations for Kids Susan Ryan to come on up and start us out, and after her, the Youth Link Board will, will join us.
Actually, I'm gonna be the one that talks, cause I talk really fast. And we only get five minutes, so I'm gonna talk really, really fast. My name is Anne Lewis, I'm also a member of Congregations for Kids, and Nancy Jacobs is our chairperson sitting over there. We provide backpacks and school supplies to kids, low-income kids here in Bellevue School District. We're really the only ones that do. We work with the school district to make sure we help the very neediest kids. We provide backpacks every other year, we provide school supplies, sometimes just the supplies only. For kindergarteners, we have a little picture dictionary as well. We have issues that we really need the school board to think about and resolve. Two specific names to keep in mind, two things. One is sustainability, which is from our perspective, Congregations for Kids, and the second one is student equity. Sustainability, we've been doing this for like twenty-two years. It'll be twenty-two in August. We provide, provided about fifteen hundred this past year, or fourteen hundred this past year, fifteen hundred, we're looking to provide backpacks and/or school supplies to kids in the Bellevue School District. We really want to thank Betty Takahashi, Judy Huntsberger, Sean in the warehouse, and the Family Connection Center people, because they're our connection to help the kids. We're all in this together. The Family Connection people say how very, very important it is that low-income kids get a backpack and/or school supplies. It makes them feel like they're like everybody else. And there's a handout here, there's a wonderful story on the back talking about student equity, to make them feel like they're everybody else and they can learn. The second piece is sustainability. We, in the past, have given about thirty different various items depending on grade to the kids. This is like a fourth grader backpack, that's a kindergartner backpack. This year, we're only giving about twelve different items, because it's become too complex, too crazy, and so instead of giving most of what every kid needs in their backpack, we're now gonna give some of the things kids need. And so our specific requests for you are these three things that are in your handout in the front. Number one, oh, if I can find it easily, uh, provide basic school supplies. In the past, Bellevue School District had a room or whatever that had pencils and pens and whatever, and so if a kid doesn't have the, the paper they needed, the school could supply that. So, basic school supplies. Some schools in Bellevue School District do it, some don't. Number two, reduce, reduce the number of additional requested items that every family has to between four and seven, not the huge list. And we go through and talk to lots of grades and teachers to try and find out the list, and we break 'em down to, fourth grade gets generally these kinds of things, but it really would help if it's limited to four to seven items, not twenty. And the last is to standardize the list per grade, because it takes a lot of effort on our part to go from grade to grade and talk to kids and everything else to try and figure out what most fourth graders need, what most kindergartners need, and it's really, really hard. So we're asking the school district to do those three things. And on the back, we show the list of what we've given in the past, the thirty different items. We're showing the twelve different items we're looking at giving now. We also have links to what other schools have been doing. There's some Seattle Times articles talking about that. We'd like you to look at that as well. And it also lists the number of congregations and, and other organizations that have been helping us in the past. And, ooh, I'm only halfway through, cool, this is great. I don't know if there's anything else, if you have questions. We have been working with Judy Buckmaster. I get the impression that it's gonna take longer than maybe this year to try and change, but it definitely, there was a Seattle Times article that specifically mentioned with respect to the McLeary Act, "Ensure Equity for All Children. Every school needs a strong foundation to support basic education which includes transportation, classroom supplies, plus teachers, principals, classroom aides, etc." But classroom supplies are basic for their education. And it really makes a difference to the kids coming in, that they look like everybody else. We, when we do these backpacks, we shuffle them like cards, so that in any one grade, it's not the poor kid's backpack. They're all mixed up, they look like everybody else's, they're really sturdy, so they last two years. We try and do our due diligence and the best we can, but things are changing. And we need the support of the school board and the school district to make the changes possible. Anything else?
I think we're good, and you did a good job.
Oh, good, thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments and for what you do, and you're, just to let you know, your timing is great. We do have a board discussion on equity at our next meeting, so this is relevant information for us, so thank you.
If you want us to, or give you background as, as just a background, we'd be happy to do that. And we'll stay till break if anybody has questions.
Thank you very much. Alright, next up, we have Youth Link Board, and then after Youth Link Board, we will have, um, Grashna Proudy.
Good afternoon, members of the Bellevue School Board. My name is Helena Stevens. I'm the Family Youth and Teen Services Manager with the City of Bellevue and staff to the Youth Link Board. So I'm here this afternoon with two of my board members. First of all, to invite you all to our annual gumbo night. This is our nineteenth year doing gumbo, and if you haven't come, we encourage you to come. I do most of the cooking, so you have to put up with my food. And to also kind of give you a little bit of, of update as to what Youth Link has been doing. So, uh, one, we want to let you know that the annual Kids Care Coat Drive collected over thirty-five hundred coats this past season, and we have already distributed out twenty-five hundred coats to many children throughout the Bellevue community. And the remaining coats will be going to various agencies for further distributions, to kind of help our children stay warm. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to my board members, and they can update you on our priorities and goals.
My name is Zach England, I'm a senior at Bellevue High School, and I want to tell, tell you a little bit about the work that the Youth Link Board has been doing. So we've agreed this year to focus on homeless, homeless youth in Bellevue and the East Side as our board opportunity, or board priority, sorry. For 2017, the Youth Link objectives are, the Youth Link Board will partner with, uh, will partner and work with local youth organizations to address, one, homelessness. Youth Link will promote, educate, and support youth agencies focusing on homelessness throughout the East Side community. Youth Link will create new alliances and utilize existing partnerships to achieve greater understanding for the, for the root cause of youth homelessness and work with impacted youth to advance change. Our second objective is career development and mentorship. Youth Link will work with a variety of local businesses to develop career and mentorship opportunities. The goal is to assist youth in career planning and address youth employment through programs such as our Youth Link University and other business mentor programs for middle and high school students. And our third and last objective is to focus on equity. Youth Link will engage in partnership opportunities with a variety of diverse youth organizations to create a higher understanding of equity issues that impact children and youth in the Bellevue area.
Hello, my name's Daryl Sakiji, and I'm a board member. In addition to the board goals, we want to update you on the priorities that were listed from four hundred and fifty students at the two thousand sixteen Youth Involvement Conference, which is hosted by Youth Link every year, or every other year. First one is priority is employment. We want to expand access to community, community internship programs, organize job career fairs, create a website that allows collaboration with invocational organizations, and take a look at education or various creating tutoring programs. The second priority is safety. We'd like to work with the Bellevue School District regarding awareness of bullying prevention programs. Priority three is transportation. Work with transportation to increase awareness of lack of sidewalks in and around South Bellevue. Uh, priority, uh, and the other thing with transportation, increase access to counselors for student mental health issues. Priority, next priority is education. More classes for students to learn adult knowledge. They'd like to know things like how to do your taxes, how to bank, and other life skills. And the last priority is health. More access and information regarding mental health services, drug awareness, linkage to information regarding substance abuse. And the last one is increased access to assessment tools and counselors for mental health issues.
Alright.
We would like to thank the board. As you know, Youth Link is a partnership between the City of Bellevue and the Bellevue School District, so we want to thank you for your continued support. Thank you for your liaisons that you send to our board meetings, and we hope that we'll see you at the gala.
Thank you very much, all for what you do.
Thank you.
Alright, that brings us to Grashna Proudy, and then the next person will be Christopher Drejum, Drejum?
Grashna Proudy? Did you mean me?
Yes, Grashna Proudy.
Alright, and I have the letter for the board, and I also have a question. So, the letter here, and I really encourage the board to start reading about our education, and I think the outgoing superintendent could be a great resource for you if he decides to do that. I would encourage you to do Leipzig Connection, Shadow Government, like I mentioned before, and also start reading on Agenda Twenty-One, Behind Green Masks, and I think then our vocabulary about equity will get more sense. There's also a book written by Michael Savage, Government Zero, No Borders, No Language, No Culture. And this is the way, when you read the letters, not just give to the superintendent, and I explain to you why. Because legal industry is overtaking our education. This is the main point, and it has been doing it for years. So, uh, when I read the letter I got from Bellevue, I looked at it's really some violence and maybe demoralization going into collectivism and creative destruction. These are all the notions you need to research. And again, power is in the shadow, and no need to block the information I requested, and I requested about, uh, some cases that Bellevue School was involved. And, uh, these are for the history of education, so we can look and really explore the model of collectivism under different notions. Attitude or equity is not what we as ordinary people understand, so please start reading the resources I brought. And you are looking for new superintendent, I think you would learn much more if you invited me. And I know RCW twenty-eight A four oh five, and I think that's another thing that is good for you to, to get acquainted. And end point is really not important. I don't care to be hired as superintendent, but I encourage you to invite me, because what has been gone, going on in our education really needs to be paused, and we need to start unwrapping what we had. My last question is whether next time I can bring you two links. Marshall Rosenberg is a great person I would like to, you to get acquainted, so I would bring two links, and the nice gentleman there would just click on them, and I introduce, so we can all listen to Marshall Rosenberg and Amp Sprache.
Thank you for your comments. As far as the videos go, we usually don't during the comments section want to have transition back and forth with videos, so, but if you can send those links to the board, each one of us can benefit from watching them.
Then I will talk about it, that's fine, I'm flexible. But you see, there is now, now things that go one way.
Thank you. Alright, so next up is Christopher, is it Drejum? Drejum, and then Benjamin Musso will be next. And you guys can correct me on that pronunciation when you come up, sorry.
Hi, Christopher Drejum from Newport High School, and I'm here representing thirty-five staff members from Newport as well. The following are excerpts of letters sent out by two local school districts to their staff and families relating to recent actions taken by the executive branch of the federal government and the impact those actions have had on students, families, and staff in those districts. Current events nationally are impacting many of our students, families, community members, and fellow colleagues. Changes to federal immigration and transgender bathroom laws and practices clearly are raising questions, concerns, and in some cases, confusion. As a caring and supportive staff, we want to respond to those seeking help or expressing fear. It is what makes the Edmund School District of seventy thousand households, twenty thousand students and families, and three thousand employees an incredibly strong and rich place to live and learn. Seattle Public Schools is committed to educating children regardless of religion, race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, country of origin, or a student's immigration status. We will do whatever it takes to make sure every student thrives, and I, as superintendent, want to reassure you, we will do everything within our power to make sure that all of our children are safe, honored, and respected while in our care. Here's an excerpt from the letter that our district sent out. "The silence from our district is deafening on this issue. It is unfortunate that recent events have made staff, students, and families worried, afraid, and confused. It's also unfortunate that our district has done nothing on a district-wide scale to ease the fears and worries of these same individuals, or to help inform them of their rights. We recognize that it may be your desire to remain apolitical during this tumultuous and hostile social climate. However, we also recognize that with the uptick of crimes of hate around our country as well as locally, our students are feeling targeted. We all, teachers, administrators, and board members, have a responsibility to assure our students of their inherent value, worth, and safety. Now is not the time to remain silent. In December, you adopted a resolution that acknowledged our community values regarding the humanity and dignity of every person, the importance of showing compassion to each other, and the right of individuals to freedom and safety. You also pointed out our district's commitment to fostering safe and healthy learning environments, the protection of all student rights under federal and state law as well as BSD policies and procedures, and the cultivation of an environment of acceptance, support, and kindness for all. These are lofty, worthy sentiments. The Newport colleagues that I represent believe that the district must take action. We feel very strongly that our district should join the company of other neighboring districts and promptly send out a letter that accomplishes the following three things. Number one, recognizes the impact that the executive actions, as well as their recent crimes of hate, have had on the lives of many in our community. Number two, provides accurate information about current laws and policies that protect students and families. And number three, disseminates resources for where our community members can turn to receive more information and support. We await your timely leadership and optimism with a sense of unity, thank you."
Thank you. Alright, uh, next up, we have Benjamin, can you pronounce that for me? Musso, and then we have Jennifer Fisher.
Thank you for your time, I'm Benjamin Musso. I'm a spokesperson for Interlake High School's green team, and, uh, we would like the district board to approve installation and possibly funding for hand dryers at Interlake. Hand dryers cost less money than paper towels in the long run. They are more sanitary, they carry huge environmental benefits, and they make bathrooms much easier to maintain. So if you'll go to the next page on your handout. Uh, one of the main reasons we are trying to get hand dryers is to reduce the waste that Interlake produces. Interlake's annual paper towel usage is equal to over five tons of paper, costing an estimated eleven thousand dollars a year. Our vice principal recently notified us that Interlake produces the most waste out of all Bellevue School District schools, and paper towels clearly do not help with this issue. Next page. These two pictures show how paper towels contribute to messy restrooms overall. Paper towels litter Interlake's restrooms in a variety of ways, from clogged sinks to used paper towels strewn around on the ground. Some studies have shown that bacteria can breed in used paper towels. Also, paper towel dispensers often run out before the end of the day, leaving students with no way to dry hands. Hand dryers would help solve these problems and overall unhygienic environment. Next page. Interlake students were very supportive of our project. As the graphs show, about eighty percent of respondents to our survey said that they support installing hand dryers at Interlake. The majority wanted both hand dryers and paper towels to be made available. Next page. This brings up the question of whether hand dryers would actually be used if both they and paper towels were made available. The answer to that is clearly yes. Seventy percent of respondents said that they would use hand dryers at least half the time. Based on this, hand dryers would actually be the preferred method of drying hands at Interlake. Next page. So this is the hand dryer that we finally decided on, the Toto Model HDR one oh one. It is energy efficient, dries hands quickly, has an air filter for good hygiene, and is very quiet. It is three hundred twenty dollars a piece, which may seem pretty expensive, but it's actually pretty cheap compared to other comparable five hundred to thousand dollar hand dryers. Next page. This is a graph from an MIT study showing carbon emissions that result from each method of drying hands. As you can see, the proposed hand dryer would be much less than the current situation. Next page. This shows the energy usage caused by each method of drying hands. Again, um, hand dryers are definitely the greenest option. Next page. Hand dryers are also hugely beneficial when it comes to savings. They generally pay for themselves after about two years, and beyond that, they produce significant savings that can then be reallocated to other educational programs. After thirty years, looking in the long run, having both hand dryers and paper towels would save us almost one hundred fifty thousand dollars, and having just hand dryers would save us about two hundred ninety thousand. This graph does not account for student population growth either, which would further increase the cost of paper towels more than that of hand dryers. Next page. Last, last one. Hand dryers would cost us about nineteen thousand dollars to obtain and install in all of Interlake's restrooms, and while the cost is clearly more than worth it, it's hard to ignore that hand dryers are pretty expensive. So we hope that the district can help fund at least some of this money, and we are willing to fundraise whatever other money is needed. Furthermore, if we are unable to receive the full amount, we will select the bathrooms with the most traffic and install hand dryers in those. Thank you for listening.
Thank you both for coming out tonight. Alright, um, and we'll get into it to make sure you have the right person and staff to contact about, about going forward with any of that. Before you leave, somebody will give you that. Let's see, Jennifer Fisher.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Fisher, I'm the Executive Director for Bellevue Life Spring. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. On behalf of our board, our staff, and our volunteers, I invite all of you to join us for our March thirtieth Step Up to the Plate Benefit Luncheon. We will be featuring John Stanton, a Bellevue resident and Newport High School graduate, also the CEO of the Mariners, as well as the President of Trilogy Partners as our guest speaker, as well as, we're honored to have Dr. Mills join us as well. He's a board member, and we're very sad to see you going to Colorado. They've gained something that we've lost. If you're not familiar with who we are, we are an organization that supports the thirty-seven hundred children and their families that are living in poverty right here in Bellevue. That's one in five students. If you're, I'm sure you're aware, there are four schools where forty percent or more of the kids are living in poverty, and these are children of our neighbors, our kids' soccer teammates, our coworkers, the people that service at restaurants, clean our homes, clean our apartment buildings. These are the children and the families that we serve. We serve through four basic services, food, we're the organization that does break time mealtime, that supports children that are at risk of hunger during breaks. We also provide... We also provide $60,000 in scholarships for summer school. We provide rent support and utility support, as well as our thrift shop located in Bellevue Square provides gift cards and vouchers to children that may need new clothing or have worn clothing. So that's kind of the basic services. What makes us unique is we were the first nonprofit in Bellevue, formerly known as Overlake Service League. We're now 106 years old. We also don't accept any government funding. That allows us to serve those children and families living right above the poverty line. So when it comes July 1 of every year, we start out at zero and then raise, right now currently, we're close to $2 million of an annual budget to support the needs of our community. So I invite you to learn more about who we are and to join us on March 30th. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for coming out. All right. That brings us to the end of our public comments. I would like to say thank you to everyone for coming out to share comments and to be here, and I also am going to take advantage of the fact that all these people who are passionate about our community are sitting here and remind you that this week is our superintendent search, and we have community forums so that you can meet each of our three finalist candidates in the mornings and evenings on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday right here in this building. So please join us and pass it on. You can also join online. So thanks, everybody. And while everyone's kind of transitioning, we'll get set up for our Bennett Elementary and Bellevue High change order. All right, Jack, you're up.
Okay, item 4.1, Bennett Elementary Replacement Project. It actually is not a word of contract. It is a change order number two. We're seeking approval for this. And basically, the five items in change order two are all dealing with the unsuitable soils and the other types of cement treatment that we've had to do to stabilize some of the soils under the fields. Bennett has been a challenging site as far as poor soil conditions, and knowing that going into the project, and it's been further exacerbated this year with the amount of wet weather we've had and so on. So we've had to take some other extraordinary measures to be able to keep the project moving ahead so we can go ahead and be able to open the school for next fall. So that's part of the push here now is to be able to go ahead. And again, a couple of weeks ago, we did a similar type thing where we also had some additional costs for some of the site stabilization and so on. So this change order two basically is all dealing with the remaining items that we didn't have priced when we brought the other change order in, because it was important to us to make sure that we could go ahead and pay the contractor for the significant dollars that they have tied up in the project. So we're seeking approval of change order number two and the additive amount of $354,759.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions about this one? Thank you for providing the comparable, the capital projects outlined so that we could sort of see where the prices and things stuck up. That's helpful to have.
I'll go ahead and move that we approve Bennett change order number two.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next.
Okay, and the second item is change order number one. This will be the only one for the Bellevue High Softball Field Batting Cages and Storage Building Project. Again, part of this is driven by our Title IX report and investigation that we did a few years ago to provide equity as far as both male and female sports at the high school level. And so we've been systematically going through the high school facilities, doing the same type of storage buildings at each of them. We developed a model for that. And so each school gets the same type of thing throughout the district. Bellevue High received a synthetic turf softball field, new dugouts, new storage building, and covered batting cages. And then while we were doing that project, we wanted to go ahead and add a storage facility shed to the baseball, boys' baseball, and also covered batting cages. So those have been done, and it is commensurate with what we have at Interlake High School and also Newport High School. So last one that we have that we'll be working on will be Sammamish, and we'll be doing that hopefully this spring and summer as part of the final phase of that project.
Okay. Does anyone have questions on this one?
I have one question, just a point of clarification. It says that this is change order one, and then the items listed are change item number four, five, six. I'm wondering, where is one, two, three, and how did they get approved? Or did they just, I'm just wondering about the logistics so I understand what it is we're passing. Make sure I get it.
Yeah, the change orders are tracked by a numerical item that's listed for the contractor, and some of those, even though there is no cost, it maybe is a change in the scope of the work. And so once everything is done, subcontractors say, hey, there's no cost, we were going to do this, now we're doing it this way. So there are some things that are a no-cost item, and there are a couple of cases where, not in so much here, but a lot of times there'll be a credit involved with that as well that will be deducted from the amount.
The ones that are missing, the out of sequence, just probably were no cost.
Have been handled either as no-cost items to the owner.
Thank you.
And just to be clear, you're saying, Jack, the change items roll up into a change order?
That's correct. So this makes up change order number one. Yeah, these are all the components of that.
Okay. Any other questions?
I move that we approve Bellevue High School change order number one.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that takes care of that. Thanks, Jack. And that brings us to our reports, and I want to acknowledge and appreciate that we have a PE and health report we won't be hearing from tonight. It's a written-only, but I wanted to appreciate the folks for submitting that and let them know that if any board members have questions after tonight, they will send them to the superintendent to make sure we get answers from you on that, but thank you. Next, we're going to go and hear from the Boys and Girls Club, one of our community partners. Tonight is Community Partner Night. This is really nice, highlighting what a great district we have with so many people contributing.
Fun that is Community Partner Night, and you have been addressed so far by two community partners.
Three.
Three, actually, yeah, that's right. Youth Link, too. So here with us tonight from Boys and Girls Club of Bellevue is Ryan Scott, the COO and Vice President. And I believe he's been with the club about, oh, 20 years now?
Oh, yeah. It's about 13 here in Bellevue.
Oh, okay. All right, 13 here in Bellevue. And this is Yana Shabonova.
Shabonov.
Shabonov. And Yana is a student at Sammamish High School. She hails from Lake Hills in Odle. And we just realized that we were there at the same time. And Lance Latimer.
Matt Hager.
Lance is gone now.
I knew that.
Yep.
Matt Hager, who has been with the club also in a variety of positions and is currently the director of the Be Great Graduate program, which is one of the programs that they will highlight for you tonight. So take it away.
Well, thank you for the invitation to speak, and thank you for what has been a long partnership with the Bellevue School District. I thought I would take just a couple of minutes and give a, just kind of a high overview of the Be Great Graduate program, and then defer to two people who are much more interesting when it comes to the program itself. But as you know, I mean, we've, the Boys and Girls Club has a long partnership with Bellevue School District. We've been in schools now for more than 20 years and serve just about every elementary, middle, and a number of high schools through our programs. The Be Great Graduate program is one that we wanted to come and specifically speak a little bit about because it's very unique and we're doing some, we're doing some really great things, and I have a great example of the great things that we're doing here. This program started about 2009, and this was about the time Boys and Girls Clubs looked at expanding teen programming into the Lake Hills neighborhood. At that time, we purchased the former Lake Hills library, converted it into a teen center, and started running programs. And about that time, we started talking about dropout prevention and what can we do to support kids, particularly in East Bellevue, that were at risk for dropping out from high school. We were approached by a local foundation, had this really nice kind of two-week conversation, and all of a sudden, we had a program, and off we went. We grabbed some juniors and seniors in high schools, said, let's get them through high school, and realized very quickly that that intervention was much too late, and the program focus shifted significantly more towards the middle school time. As the program grew, we have deepened our partnership with the school district and also engaged the local housing authority as a great partner. We have three elementary school sites in King County Housing Authority properties. And then with this site in Lake Hills, all of our King County housing residents utilize the teen center. We provide programs free of charge. As we really understood that this middle school was the place we needed to be, we were approached and engaged by the Gates Foundation, who made an investment. Started a middle school program called Club 678 for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And really, the goal of this program is to support kids as they transition from elementary to middle school and from middle to high school to really, you know, have a great academic experience and have a plan to go do something great afterwards. So the structure works where we're working with school counselors on a daily basis, you know, Matt and his, you know, his peers, and the local housing authority to identify those students who really are at risk for whatever reason of not graduating. And then our staff work with them very individually to understand and eliminate any of the barriers that may exist between them and graduation, and help them understand and develop a plan for what's next. What is that next step that you're going to take? We found this to be very effective, and, you know, with the help of the school district, we've really developed a framework of what are those indicators that our staff need to be mindful of? Things like number of attendances that happen over the course of the year. We know eighth grade algebra can be a little bit of a sticky subject, core classes, you know, what are those pieces where our staff can really reinforce the priorities that are coming from the school district to ensure that it's kind of one voice being heard during the school day and after school? And, you know, just to give you a sense, since 2009 of kind of how this has worked, you know, we've supported about 500 kids through the program so far academically. What we've, I'm really pleased to say that what we found is in English, Science, and Math, you know, the kids who participate have increased their GPA, about 60 to 70% of them have increased their GPA in those core areas. One of the things that has, what we're really proud of is we've spent a lot of time working with the school district and the King County Housing Authority on absences, and all of the kids who are participating in the program this year are under that 10 absence threshold, which we know is super critical. And we also know that very consistently, you know, 100% of the kids are graduating and successfully progressing from grade to grade. So we're, you know, we're really pleased with the efforts that are making, that we're making here. Understanding that one of those mindful transitions is the time from second, first to second semester of ninth grade, our program shifts a little bit where we not only provide the academic support, but that's really where we start to get into the career exploration. So working with our corporate partners, we're doing site visits. There's something incredibly cool about the Nenbbo Cafeteria. I don't know what it is, but it's one of the favorites every year. But at the same time, they're having people from, you know, corporations talk to them about, here's why I'm in this field, here's what I do in marketing, you know, store visits with local carriers, or whatever it may be, to really help them understand what is that lightbulb moment that's going to really get them to understand, okay, what's the plan that I need, and then how do we work back from there? Overall, this has been a really great partnership, and we, you know, we could not be more pleased. The program continues to grow, and I'm going to let Matt talk a little bit about some of the next steps that we're taking with the program. And then we have Yana to kind of close things out here.
Great. Kind of piggyback on what Ryan said, our partnerships with the middle schools, particularly Odle and Tillicum have been a huge, great success for us. We have a couple of staff that are up there during, yeah, pretty much every day of the week, just meeting with kids, seeing how they can help with them. Our next step is to build the same kind of partnership over at Tillicum. That's another with some of our partners with KCHA, another need out there that we really want to try to focus on next. You know, coming up, the summer's coming around the corner. In the past, we've done some great things with the school district, helping out with curriculum. I know that the rest of classes out of our site before, a couple of summers ago, and just trying to help build that STEM programs out there. We have some great partnerships with Best Buy, kind of Geek Squad, doing some of those things out there. So that's kind of where we're going next. Anything else I need to cover?
I think the other priority that we've looked at is family engagement.
Family engagement.
How can we work together, understanding that family engagement can be incredibly difficult, both from a school perspective and from a club perspective? And we've talked a lot about particularly going into summer, and as we start to ramp up for the next school year, how can we work more closely with the district to collectively engage families and really get that parent engagement that I think we're all looking for. That's a real focus area for us moving forward. But we're so pleased to be working so closely with the district and King County Housing Authority to really help us identify and make sure that we're being successful. And it's really nice that with this partnership, you know, our priorities have very much aligned with those of the district, and it really has worked very well for us. With that said...
This is Yana.
Hello.
Yana's going to do a little bit about herself and her time during the club.
My name is Yana Shabonov, and I'm here today with the Boys and Girls Club Teen Center. I started going to the club when I was about four years old. The first Boys and Girls Club that I attended was Hidden Village. That is where I grew up, my second home. I found out about Hidden Village and the Boys and Girls Club through my aunts and uncles. They went to the club when they were in elementary school. After elementary school, I started going to the teen center. When I first went there the summer before sixth grade, I remember being terrified to walk through the two front doors because I knew the transition from what I call baby club to the teen club would be a big deal to me. My biggest fear was how I would make new friends when there were kids twice as old as me there. But what really made the transition easier for me were all of the staff. The staff helped encourage me to make new friends and grow out of the stage of being shy and keeping to myself. The first program that I got involved in was the Be Great Graduate program. Besides helping with, helping me with my homework, I was required to meet with my mentor at least twice a week, although I probably met with him almost every day. During these check-ins, we would go over grades and missing assignments and come up with a plan on how I could get those turned in. They also helped me stay organized with my planner and my notebooks and provided any school supplies that I needed. They even made me talk to the scary teachers when things were not going right. I did not realize at the time that my mentor had already reached out to them on my behalf to try and make it easier. Because of their help in growing my confidence, by the time seventh and eighth grade came around, I wasn't so intimidated by school or the teens at the club. That is when I became super attached to the Boys and Girls Club. That is when I felt like the teen center was my second home. After middle school passed, high school came around quickly, but at that time, not to brag or anything, I really felt like it was my time to shine at the club. Not only did I stay in the Be Great Graduate program, but I also became more actively involved in the Keystone Community Service slash College Prep program. This has allowed me to go on to, has allowed me to go on college tours. And now I serve as the president, which means I get all the power. Just kidding. It means that I can really get, I can really be a part of the big things that the group needs to get through. It gives me a bigger responsibility, which I am happy to take on any day. I am also involved in Cooking Club, Tech Lab, and Wheel Up. Every program that the club offers, I was a part of at some point or am currently taking a part in. By participating in these different programs, by getting homework help and bringing my grades up throughout the years, along with helping around the club, I have gotten the Teen of the Month award at the Boys and Girls Club. I was also runner-up to the Youth of the Year Award this year, which I am going to win next year. By showing my maturity, my maturity level with these different programs that I have taken a part in, with the help of a few staff members, I have been given the amazing opportunity to go above and beyond by working the front desk for community service hours during the summer and partly during the school year. But what's even better is that I was promoted to the front desk receptionist and worked three days a week, which consists of answering phones, sending messages to the staff, giving tours, assisting the staff, parents and kids with anything they need help with and more. With achieving all of these tasks through all of the thicks and the thins, I know that I will be able to graduate high school and become something of myself, something big. I'm not exactly sure what that is yet, but hey, I'm only a junior in high school who should probably start thinking about getting her life together before it's too late. Just kidding. Thank you.
Thank you so much for sharing your story with us. Appreciate that. So that definitely gave us some insights into how things work and what happens with the programs. On that note, do folks want to ask any questions about how the programs are working or how our partnership works?
I had one question. I was wondering what your, how many mentors actually are part of the Be Great Graduate? And then how many, how many students do they have in partnership?
We have five full-time staff that are directly, for lack of a better term, case-managing for students as they go through it. And our participation right now is somewhere between 60 and 70 students. So it's a lot. Got a lot of kids that we've got involved, but it's all great stuff.
And it's always one-to-one? Each student has the same Be Great Graduate mentor every time?
Each student is designed a mentor. And really, I mean, obviously, the goal here is to become academically self-sufficient, right? And so there are different levels of engagement depending on the situation. There may be some who just need a once-a-week check-in. There may be some where it's an everyday, it's an everyday check-in. But the goal, as we move towards those high school years, that really... But the goal as we move towards those high school years that really it becomes more just, hey, just checking in, making sure everything's okay. And, you know, a lot of that is, you know, there's a level of self-sufficiency that exists there.
I don't really have a question, but I guess I'd just like to thank you for coming out. I think I'd been mainly aware of the Boys and Girls Club as a place where kids went to engage in activities, but hadn't really been aware of the sort of purposeful programming that you described. And that's really, really good background to get. And I especially appreciate, Yana, your comments about how that affected you and it gives really good insight into how that can affect kids. So thank you.
Thank you so much for sharing with us the stories and, and, and the work that you're doing to support our students. So I'm really am curious about the conversation at the Boys and Girls Club going forward on the family engagement piece. Would you, would you mind sharing a little more with us as far as what your next step would be and, and, and where do you see our partnership between the school district and, and the Boys and Girls Club specifically regarding the family engagement?
Want me to tackle that?
Go ahead.
Well, I, you know, I think, I think a lot of our conversation has revolved around particularly those families that are transitioning from elementary to middle school and making sure that there is an awareness of the resources that exist. You know, we also know that family engagement is very difficult. There are a lot of things that, you know, families are trying to juggle and, you know, there are times when, you know, if we're doing a family night at the club, that we may be able to see a group of families that, you know, the school may not be seeing or vice versa. And so I think, you know, really what we're looking at is how can we be a little bit more deliberate in working together and whether, if, if we have something that we're doing, you know, handing out backpacks for back to school and we know it's going to be, you know, a high population of parents, it would be a great opportunity for someone from the school to join us to either provide information, answer questions, make connections that they may not be able to do. And likewise, through some of the family efforts at the school, if there are things that, you know, families or connections that we're not able to make, you know, we can take advantage of some of the existing resources. So I think really what we're looking at do is just try to be a little bit more deliberate in some of the existing resources and how we connect those to make sure that, that our communication with families is, is a little bit more robust. Is that a fair assessment?
Ryan and Ted December, who is the education specialist with King County Housing Authority, we just met earlier this week and we were having this very conversation about what are our next steps and with that particular population. And I'm sure, as you know, family and community engagement is something that we're talking about in a lot of different areas and with, regarding a lot of different communities. So it's, I think it's a next step for us to really come up with a robust plan overall.
What struck me about this is that, and I don't know how to say it in a way without, I don't want to offend anybody who's not here, but it seems like you're, you're doing a lot of what I see, like where I sit, families do. You know, I sit down every night and check my kids, you know, I did, not now, he's a senior, but, you know, and make sure I have the supplies and coach them on how to talk to the teacher and advocate for themselves. And so I'm guessing you're needing to do that for places where, for whatever reason, families can't do that. So thank you for stepping in and providing that.
As we continue to talk about our community partners, and I found the document, it got uploaded to, did you find it? Anyway, we'll be talking about, or I can talk with you about the number of organizations that are providing one-on-one mentoring and what our plans are next year to bring that all together under one umbrella. So Boys and, Boys and Girls Club of Bellevue is one of five organizations that are providing one-to-one mentoring for our kids in middle school and high school.
I want to thank you.
I want to thank you for what you do as well. I have a history of involvement, of my kids' involvement in the Boys and Girls Club in the elementary and middle school programs. And I found it to be a, a very engaging and useful experience for them beyond some of the, just the homework, I mean, the homework time was helpful. It's better when they have more homework done when I pick them up. But I really appreciated the level of integration and respect and the values that they taught the kids. And I, like Steve, didn't have as much exposure to some of your formal programs. So I appreciated the, the descriptions of those. I have two questions for you and, and they are basically, is there anything, you're already working with Judy, so I assume it's kind of covered, but is there anything that we can do to better support your work? And then the second is, do you feel like you have what you need to collaborate with the other folks on site who are doing similar work to you? Like Jubilee Reach is another group that, that's providing similar types of structured support to, to students even during the school day. So, yeah, what can we do and do you have what you need to, to collaborate with the other partners?
Great questions. You know, I, I think we've talked a lot about collaboration and to Judy's point, I mean, I think that's something that we continue to work toward. I mean, we certainly, you know, we certainly don't have any intention of trying to work in a vacuum on this. And we know there are kids who spend time with us and spend time with, you know, Jubilee or other organizations. And so we have, you know, collaborated, but I certainly think there are always opportunities to be a little bit more mindful about how we do that. And so as we, you know, as we move forward with that conversation, I think that's really helpful. You know, I, I think the other place, it's always kind of a little bit of a sticky wicket, although we're, we're working our way through it, is kind of some of the data and tracking on how this, you know, how this works and understanding that there are, you know, there are some, you know, some ways in which we can share results of our program and some data points that, that we cannot share because of, you know, federal privacy laws. I think that, that's something that we continue to try to negotiate and perfect. And I don't know that we're quite there yet, but I certainly think that we're, you know, we're mindful of it and continue to work towards that. So I don't know that I have a specific ask on it either, but I think those are probably two of the places where we see opportunity to be a little bit better. Is that a fair?
Yes, absolutely.
Fair assessment?
And, and I would say that, that data piece is a common theme when we meet with the cohort that has this Gates grant. It's a five-year grant and we meet quarterly at the Gates Foundation. There are three housing development, no.
Three housing and five school districts.
Five school districts and three housing development authorities, there are three housing authorities. And so we get to learn from each other what's working, what isn't working, different approaches. Family and community engagement has been a big theme, but data is the, is the one piece that's kind of holding everybody back. So I guess it's comforting to know we're not alone, but we're all trying to figure out the best way to, to make that work, respecting families' privacy, but still get the data that people need to, to do the work. So I'd like to give a shout out to Naomi and Kevin, who, Kevin O'Neill and Naomi Calvo, who have worked on this a lot to try and make things work for all of these partnerships and will continue to do so, so.
Great. Well, thank you very, very much for coming out tonight and thank you again for sharing your story. Is it Le- Leana?
Yana.
Yana. Okay. Thank you so much for sharing that and taking time to be here and preparing it. All right. Good luck with your college journey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. All right. That brings us to our highly capable program review and then we'll go ahead and have a break after that. Does that work for everyone?
All right. Sweet.
Oh, and just a side note to the board as everyone comes up to set up, the attachment that was with the Boys and Girls Club is actually the one that was supposed to be with that eight, whatever item that we punted to another meeting, the, the community partners. So we'll put that back in, but yeah. Yep.
All right. Welcome.
Is this the slide?
Yes.
Perfect.
Hello. Who are you all?
So we thought we would just focus more on the program updates as they also include our racial equity and inclusion focus. And I'll probably add a few things. But I wanted to share with you that we have 167 students currently being served in their homeschool. And so previously, when students wanted to exit the full-time program, they basically withdrew from services and they were no longer afforded that opportunity. And so now we're working with schools where these students are attending and creating a plan. The elementary teachers work together to create plans. For secondary, we do a little bit more of providing them a document that kind of talks about what these strengths mean and, and how to better meet their needs in their homeschool. And then we spend time in the schools providing professional development. We invite the teachers to the district-wide professional development, but doing as much support as we can so that students that want to stay in their homeschool environment are able to do that. So that's something that we're excited about. We have 108 high school students, as you probably saw, and the rest are at elementary, but I expect to continue to see that grow. And as long as we're on that board, I'll talk a little bit about one that you would see later, which is the domain-specific services. So we really want to start next year for first graders, identifying them if they just have one strength area, so that they can also be served in their homeschool in that area rather than telling them you're not identified for any type of services. Those students need services as well. And then the nice thing about those services is that we tell teachers, we don't care if a child is identified for our program or not. If the child has the ability to participate with the other students, they should be included in whatever you're doing to meet the needs of those students, so that all of our students are getting that same pedagogy and higher-level learning experience. So as you probably have heard yourselves, and I've heard a great deal over the last two and a half years, is about the gifted label for our program and for our students. Every year, when I do focus groups with the students, I don't believe there's ever been one focus group where the students didn't talk about not really appreciating being called gifted. And I agree with them. So we're in the middle of a naming challenge where we have asked parents, teachers, staff to send us suggestions for names for our program. And, you know, they're all over the board. So far, we have over 700 responses, so it's very interesting to read the responses. Some are angry, some are very happy. And so we'll, we'll look at all of that information. Some of our own program teachers said, why do we need a label at all? And, and our thought really is, if you're a third-grade student at Cherry Crest, you're just a Cherry Crest third-grader, right? You don't really have to have a label. I think that more for administrative purposes, we want to delineate our program. So maybe I use it more in central office, but we don't really need to talk about our program name very much at school and, and make those children feel separated or different. As far as curriculum being written, we're doing the finishing touches really on our GMSP curriculum. And so that's something that's really been in the work over the last several years. And then beginning to get our high school curriculum written. And last spring, we heard from University of Washington, because we had the Robinson Center professors coming and teaching, and they had decided they were going to leave UW and they didn't really have anybody to replace them. And we knew that with the strength of some of our teachers, that we could write programs or write courses for our senior-level students. And so those two courses have been written. And what's really nice about the college-level English is that it will be available for all of our gifted students across the district who have finished their AP requirements by the end of their junior year. So that's what we're working on curriculum-wise. And then we started testing for secondary and private schools in December this year. We usually have done that in January, February, and then they don't get their results until springtime. It was impeding our private school parents because the school was asking them to make their deposit for the upcoming year, which meant that most of those students, then if they were identified for services, were deferring and not coming into the district for a year. But by getting them their results earlier, they've been able to make decisions earlier on and come into Bellevue next year rather than staying in the private school setting. And as well, of course, our schools can start working on their master schedules a little bit earlier. And of course, you are aware of the challenge of our racial demographics. And I shared with you last year how we're working with the Title I Schools, Phantom Lake, and Woodridge, increasing communication with those families as well as providing applications with information about the program to the teachers. So at conferences with parents, teachers can slide that information and application and encourage families to apply for gifted testing because we know it's really about who applies. And having kind of a referral-based system where parents or teachers refer, we don't receive referrals for all races of students or it's unbalanced, the number that we receive. So trying to encourage that through those schools. As well, we're planning on a universal pilot of second-grade students. So eventually, we'd like to test all second-grade students in the district. But next year, we'll work with just Ardmore, Woodridge, and Clyde Hill and test the second graders at their school and see how, how that works out so that we can better plan to roll it out to all of the elementary schools. But moving away from our kindergarten testing and looking at K1 students really just through the, the data and the observations and the information we receive from teachers and parents about those students, so moving that, the funding that we spend on that standardized test, which is really not a fair assessment for kindergarten students, as we know, they come in at varying levels. And so students who have had more preparation at home come in and do better on that assessment than students who have not. So it's better for us to be looking kind of at those students all through K1 and providing for them anytime. And so I've, you know, told the principals that I've worked with thus far, we don't care if it's the middle of kindergarten. If a teacher wants to contact us, we will look at their data and we'll come out. They can join the program at any time. And then those students, we would probably ask to take the cognitive assessment when they, if they want to go to the full-time program during second grade, but if they want to stay in their homeschool, they would receive those services all the way through 12th grade.
Are you saying that, are you saying that for the students in K1, that all of them would receive services in their schools and that you wouldn't test into the formal full-time program until second grade period?
Right. And currently, that they test, but they receive services in their homeschool now. So they don't go to a program. We do a differentiated plan for each K1 identified student in their homeschool curriculum.
But currently, if they do qualify for that, are they automatically put into the second grade program?
They roll right out.
But now we're changing that so that we would, all students would still have to test at second grade. Is that correct?
Right. Correct.
Thank you.
And so that's really kind of all I have for updates. I don't know if you had questions based on the information that was sent or if there was something else you wanted me to share?
I think we're up to questions. I've got a list of like 20. So where's, where's everybody else at? Who wants to start? All right, you're up.
Fine. I thought your comment on slide 14, I don't know if you addressed this verbally or if you did, I'd love to have you go in to elaborate more on it, but your comment is you provide, that providing opportunities to receive gifted services in their homeschool increases participation of students who have typically been underserved. I thought that was a really interesting comment, and especially when you consider our district's focus on equity. Can you elaborate a little bit on what you see as the relationship between the, the equity goal and this idea of serving gifted kids in their homeschools?
I think that there are some students that elect...
Do you want her to answer after each question?
Oh, sorry, I forgot that we've been doing questions.
That's okay. She can do that. Okay.
One.
Just to answer them.
Since we have enough time left, why don't we do that? But could I ask you guys to moderate your comments so that you don't take seven minutes to answer Steve's question and then there's not time left for everybody? So just like maybe two minutes a question. Thanks.
I, I guess I think about who, who applies to be served and it's a parent decision. And so many parents don't choose to even apply for us to investigate whether or not their child needs services. So we know we have students and we have teachers that tell us all the time, I have students whose needs I'm having a really difficult time meeting. So they're sitting in those classrooms but not formally identified as in need of anything. And so being able to, you know, say to parents, your child really, you know, is in need of higher level. And getting it early on, that's why we're thinking about second grade so that they, so that they start early on and then we can pave the way for success in the future.
Okay. Chris?
That's really interesting. I would ask you more about that and what you saw as the, as the path forward and how you saw that developing forward. But I guess my first question is, in the same vein, does the domain-specific service, do you think that is a thing that will encourage us delivering more services in all buildings? Is that a key to?
Yes, I do.
And I'd like to hear more about that. I had, I can imagine what the complications are with that and I'm just wondering.
When we look at student data, we often will have a child with a spike in one area. And because we know that when they move to the full-time program, they're working at, you know... you know, one, two, maybe even three grade levels above. And so to put them in a situation where the demands on them in every subject area are at that level, but they maybe only have a math strength, we feel like that's putting them in a situation that's setting them up for failure. But now, we can serve that student that really has that math domain in their homeschool. And so I think we'll see that we're identifying more students that way. So the number will increase, but then we'll also be building capacity with teachers to really meet the needs of those students. And I think we'll have more students that are eligible to go to the center, even choose to stay in their homeschool because of what they see.
That's really exciting piece of this.
I hope so, too.
Kelly?
Well, when I happened to your presentation and I started to read, I just felt so incredibly sad. I just wish I had this about seven years ago, because I see you're serving like 14 kids that are international in the sixth grade right now. And I'm so pleased, and I'm so grateful for kids going forward, but I'm also sad for my own situation, because this would have, this is exactly what I wanted to have happen. So I am grateful. And I was going to ask you, oh, I was wondering, you know, how do you catch kids who had a bad day in second grade, or had a cold, or were sick, or just didn't show up, or moved to the district later? How are you going to plan to catch those kids?
That's something that we're working on right now.
They're only doing a few schools right now.
Right. And so, and that came up in our conversation with those schools, what are we going to do about those students that move in late? And so we'll have to try to develop a system for identifying them. With K-1, we often have kids that move in, you know, during kindergarten, that if they move in really close to the testing window, we test them. If they move in later, we pick them up in the fall. So we always have a plan to test new kids the next year. So it's something that we'll have to develop as far as that goes as well, just so that we can kind of keep a tab on every child.
But anyway, I think it's a real step in our direction.
Well, thank you.
On many fronts.
Thanks.
So, thank you, Laura. And I have chatted with you on PsyLife whenever we ran into each other. And I guess my question is, with the data provided in the presentations regarding the academic performance of our students who are in the program, excellence. So I guess my question to you is regarding their, I guess, their meter of happiness, their meters of how do they feel that they are being served? Do they, are they happy where they are? And I guess part of that question is reflected through probably that challenge being sent out there regarding the name. But we know, it's really the surface of the thing. It's really more important to me that our students feel belong, that they are in the right place, that serve their needs. And so could you speak to us a little bit about that aspect of service to our students in the gifted program?
Yes. I know especially probably when I go to the high school, I will hear from some students about their friends, who they're a little bit worried about. And we've spent some time at the high school actually doing what we call some stress sessions during social studies, like once a month, having one of the counselors go in, and I bought them some resources to work with the students. And they were amazed, they actually didn't think it would work, and they were amazed when they went in, that the students really did open up and speak about things. So that's been helpful. I think that the difficulty comes sometimes with what the student wants and what the parents want. And so sometimes, it's a little harder for the student to navigate their own path. And, you know, although we have several that are navigating back to their homeschool, as you can see, which is good, so making that decision. But some who I think feel a little bit pressured to stay in the program. And then, you know, a gifted characteristic is putting pressure upon yourself as well. And so many of our students are really hard on themselves, which, you know, can kind of create some unhappy. But those are things that we really try to work on. And I meet with the teachers very often throughout the school year, and oftentimes, the focus of our conversation is more on the socially-emotional needs of the students and sharing practices across schools and grade levels to discuss and share with the students and try to help them.
So could I just really quick follow-up? Is that, so it sounds like we have something to support our students. I wonder, as we go forward, if we could have maybe conversation with parents, so there's more awareness in the area of making sure that our students' social-emotional needs are being met.
Right.
Through family.
Right. Yes, and I know the teachers will initiate individual meetings, and they always offer to support, but, you know, often, we're not successful in changing the path, so, but we try if we think it's damaging to the students, so.
Well, it's nice to have things like that part of our programmatic culture, so that it doesn't become a hit or miss. It becomes something that's a culture that we perpetuate through our students, our teachers, and our connections to our families. And what's expected becomes a different thing. So I think I'm excited about the questions that Neelin asked.
And I have had Dr. Cash come before and speak with the parents as well. And he talks a lot about those kind of issues. And, you know, then it depends on which parents actually come to the presentation, but it's at least nice to have an expert in the field to come and share that information and talk with them about the pressures on their children.
Yeah. So I am excited about a lot of the changes in the program. I really like the, I mean, we knew, it's been, I think, seven years since we did the report on gifted. And we finally, we've got the pieces in place to do some single silo subject support in different spaces when people have that in their local schools. That's fantastic. It's exciting. I love the inclusion stuff. I am wondering about how to actively do more to identify the kids early, so that when they hit second grade, they got some of those services. Kids who have potential, but maybe they wouldn't appear to be in that space. How did they get the services? You know, a lot of the kids who end up testing into our gifted program, they do all sorts of things, like they go and develop their math capacity through different lessons and skills outside of classes. And, you know, and that's just part of what people do, but I wonder how we give opportunities like that to some of our underrepresented community members who have the inclinations in certain areas. So I hope that we'll keep, I hope that we're not done, I guess is my point, in that space. And I, I guess the question that I'm going to ask, I do think that we should think about the not using the name. I think there's a psychology in both directions, and I kind of wonder if we do due diligence to explore it. We worry about the tension that's created in segregating, but there's also the tension that's created by kids who come from a different neighborhood into a school, where they're not part of the neighborhood. Their parents aren't part of the social fabric, they're not part of that. And here they are, and to say, "You're just a third grader at Cherry Crest." Well, no, maybe I was a third grader at Ardmore, and now I'm a third grader at Cherry, you know, a second grader at Ardmore, and now I'm a third grader at Cherry Crest. My community was there. Like, I'm here for a reason. So I think it's important that we are tuned into both sides of the psychology there. My question for you about the data that you presented is, I noticed that we have about a quarter of our kids in the category of high-performing, low-growth in almost all the data. That's a pretty heavy percentage of kids who are in high-performing to have low growth. What are we doing there?
Well, I asked Naomi, actually, if she would, and she was supposed to be meeting with them today and getting back to me about, you know, why is it that we're not seeing growth? I actually went to a middle-school class and observed while the students were taking STAR exams, and they told me, "We get the same questions every time we take the test." And Naomi said, "That's not supposed to happen. They're not supposed to see those questions again." Which, then I said, "Well, that indicates to me that they have kind of reached the top of the test." So the test is no longer measuring growth for our students, because we can see the percentages that they're receiving on these assessments, but we're not able to measure the growth, I think, because-
I don't understand.
This is a high-level instrument.
Right.
To show growth.
To show growth, so.
So a full quarter of those kids have topped out the instrument?
I'm not sure, but I can tell you, standing in that classroom, the majority of the students tell me, "Oh, yes, this always happens. We always get the same test question." So it's something that she was going to address.
It would be great to hear more, as you guys learn more about that.
Because, and I know that that's a national trend, where they talk about students, you know, topping out the test, and then it just can't measure growth, because if you're scoring at the 99th percentile every time, you know, how does that really show that you're growing? So.
All right. So we have just a couple minutes. I want to make sure, are there any additional parts of data requests that anyone has for these guys?
What I'd be interested to see, but I don't know if we could figure out how to see it, is you have the chart of all the colleges that the gifted people go to, and I would like to compare that somehow in a way that would allow it to be compared to something like Newport.
I've heard that you can get that list through the Naviance program.
Oh, okay.
Because I thought that myself, too. I'd like to, you know, and then I don't really know that matriculation data for our students who are attending their homeschool.
Well, we'd have to, yeah, we'd have to sort of, I want to say, make it comprehensive, because it's a different number of kids and all that, but, yeah, and how the kids do when they're in those.
But it sounds like what you're asking for is a comparative report on college matriculation or college acceptance. Is there a report coming up at some point where such a cross-high-school report would be appropriate, so we're not asking for an additional thing? I don't think there's an urgency to this one.
I thought we had it, I thought we had it when Deb dropped out and did the presentation months ago.
Because I don't have seen a list just like this one that we got.
It was more comprehensive, but she did give us that report.
Why don't you take a look, and if it's missing, then ask Sharon, and you guys can give us some kind of update at some point.
I can certainly work with Deb to get that information as well.
Okay.
The one thing that will be hard is that we don't have, this is our first year, we've identified students that are going to their homeschool as gifted in their homeschool.
So we won't have very many seniors. But it, I think it'd be nice to just compare, though, our traditional students and our gifted, and see if they're having like results.
Any other questions for these guys?
Yeah, I think there's a lot of interest in this, developing this piece of the homeschool possibility for our students. And, you know, I think whatever we might know about the other resource, support pieces that are supporting this, whether it's professional development, whether it's use of the bill, I would even want to presume that I know what it is. But it would be good to, it would be good to see that as pointed out in, because I think there's support for this concept and what it might lead to, then we should know what it takes to make it happen, besides just the plan, you know?
Right. And we've talked a little bit about that, and even a little bit about personnel as we develop that, and how do we support.
Right. And I don't mean to say it as a negative at all. I really just am saying, this is really important, an important issue. This is about professional development of our teaching staff to be able to address a broader array of students. And what does that take? We ought to own that, what it takes.
Right. And the nice thing is, by rolling it up one year at a time, then our focus will be, you know, really second grade one year, and then third grade the next, and fourth grade, so that we can really work with all those teachers. But also having maybe a support person that can go in to the schools and work with them, do some coaching, some planning, some co-teaching, and those kind of things is, those are the things that are in my head that aren't totally mapped out yet, but.
So I have one thing I would like additional data on, when it's available. No rush for this at all. As you try this, embark on this program where you're going to do the in-house curriculum for the senior LASS courses. One of the things that our gifted kids haven't had is a really good chance to go and experience college, because the Running Start program doesn't necessarily address their needs. And so having the UW course available to them, instead of the community college courses available to them for certain things, was a nice opportunity. So taking that away and putting them back in a high-school classroom with a high-school class, even though the curriculum is college, does take some pieces away. So I'm wondering how we'll look at the other pieces of that long-term, like whether it's, you know, I guess the UW class was done such that each class only met twice a week, they had to manage a schedule, and different things.
And we're still doing it that way?
Yeah.
They never went to the UW.
Yeah.
They met at Interlake.
Yeah.
And that is still the way that we are, we've organized the class. It's just taught by Doug Calvert and Ryan Rolfs. But they're still doing it with the college way.
mindset.
Where, right, where it's two days a week and that kind of thing.
And they've used some of the OpenStax college materials and looked at some, you know, college syllabi and such to write the courses. And then Mr. Calvert in English is spending a lot of time really getting the students prepared for college as well.
All right. Well, I'd love to hear how that's going. So thank you very much for the reports, and it sounds like we have one piece of data there, and all good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to a break. We have a 10-minute break. Up for our mid-year progress check here.
So if we could add Eva and Elizabeth from Ford to Jeff?
We, just 25.
She has a sick child that texted her while she was here at the meeting, so. And I do have hard copies of the report, if any of you would rather have that than what was online, because we're not projecting anything.
That's okay. It's all here, and you can also have it printed out if you like.
This really, I thought, would just be a discussion. You've seen the report. I know you've been very busy with other things. We have, Melissa's not here, so I can respond to finance and operations to a point, as can Jeff, because he's worked closely there. And with that, we just open it for questions and comments that you might have. You know, I listed, I only selected six, well, seven challenges. Obviously, in a school district, there are lots of challenges, but these are the ones that we felt are really some of the bigger pieces for us to be thinking about. So with that, I'll open it up for questions, comments.
Board, how would you like to handle this discussion? We can do, give everyone a question, and then let the staff respond to the five questions, and then go around again if we have time. We can do one by one, or we can just, and if you don't have specific questions, you want to talk about some general space, we can do that as well. So where are people at? What would you like to do?
I will confess to being unprepared on this topic, so with all the other stuff that's been going on, I have not given this any kind of review.
I've given it a cursory glance. Maybe the best thing that we can do is give the next five minutes to just have us look it over in real time, and then we can still get these guys to answer questions for 20 minutes, so.
I have five questions at various levels of specificity.
Okay.
Some are, you know, overarching, and some are like, you know, very specific.
Okay. To make sure that everybody gets a question out there, if you, why don't we, is it okay if folks, if we take five minutes here on this? Because I think we'll have a more productive discussion if we have more people inputting.
Or we could consider kind of breaking from our direction we've been going lately, which is to try to have less commentary from staff, and instead have maybe more introductory commentary would be another approach.
What do you mean, introductory commentary?
Well, we've been asking for more time for Q and A and less time for actually walking through something.
Oh, you want them to walk us up?
Maybe we could have a little bit more time this time to have staff walk us through it.
All right. Can we get a five-minute walkthrough of the data? So just highlights and kind of get us acquainted, that would be helpful.
Well, the first, so I will just say, the first four pages are, we took a look at what we saw as some of the big pieces of our work over the last few years. And we broke it into this area of student success and professional development, the leadership positions that we've added, and some of that is just by rearranging staff, looking at process around employee relations and our work with facilities. So that was really intended, I think those are just, there's not any data associated to those, those are just sort of the high-level, this is where we've invested time, this is where we've invested effort. And obviously, there are dollars that have gone in to support those areas. Not meant to be a laundry list, and that wasn't the intent of this. This was really more of the work that we saw is really the bigger pieces. Melissa did a similar piece, as we looked at finance and operations, dividing it into the key areas. So again, it's really, these are the big pieces. Keep in mind that, as you well know, in the day-to-day operation and organization our size, there's just an awful lot of work that's going on, but trying to focus it back to these are really the key points. The one area that I might ask Elizabeth just to make some comments on is, we did some restructuring in the Communication Department in 2014, and I asked her to put together- we did some restructuring in the Communication Department in 2014, and I, I asked her to put together, and I'll have her just highlight what, Elizabeth, what you think would be the big pieces. But I think oftentimes, as we look at Communication, we're not all, we're not aware of everything that the Communication Department has been about and what they've been trying to do. And so, I, um, and also, she's identified some key strategic pieces moving forward. So, you want to just do two or three highlights that you'd, you'd like to call out?
Sure, so, I mean, basically, what we've been trying to do over the last several years is to increase our capacity and also develop channels where our community wants the information. In other words, areas where they, they're present, as opposed to just assuming that what we've been doing in the past is the best practice. And so, over the last several years, we did restructure the department. We've increased our social media presence and engagement significantly. And we've also developed an internal, um, staff newsletter, which we never, we had, we hadn't had for several years, as well as a stronger external communication piece. And so, right now, we're at the point where the channels are actually quite strong, and the response and the engagement's really significant. And so, over the next few years, what we would like to do is basically develop a strategic communication calendar for the district, um, focus on expanding social media use for the schools, which, right now, they're very limited in their use. And then just basically, from there, work on media relations, revitalizing our brand as a district, and then continuing to, to strengthen that engagement. And so, what I provided here was some data just so that you can see some of the growth we've had around social media and the channels and the coverage. I can tell you that I did a, an overview. So, before we did the restructure, we published one to two publications, um, a month. We managed about 10 to 13 media contacts, and we did website every, you know, everyday updates and special projects. Right now, on a monthly basis, we're publishing seven to eight publications, including the internal and external communications. We're pushing out 10 to 15 Facebook and Twitter posts a month. We're managing 15 to 30 media contacts, which is inquiries and outreach. And we're still updating the website every day and then doing special projects, which is a significant increase in our overall communication with the community.
I think one of the, the big pieces that I will just comment on with this also is in, in the work of having our communication specialists in their role. I didn't, I didn't give them the right title.
Communication managers?
The communication managers. They're assigned to schools, so they're assigned to a set of schools. And so, they're meeting specifically with the principals. They start the, they start the school year, and they're the go-to folks. So, if a principal says, "I need to get this information out," or "I want to call," highlight that they have, uh, they know who that they go to, and there is a, a relationship that's established with them. And we're seeing that grow in terms of response from our schools.
And like this year, too, like, for example, Christina had been working with Tom when he was over at Samyamish. And so, now that he's at the district office and they're doing work around the CIS, he actually made a request to have Christina continue working with him because they had already established a relationship in their report, which is, again, a positive of having them do that.
And then the last section is just our update. The data you have seen, obviously, it'll be updated again at the end of the year. But what we did, uh, identify, and I'll let Eva speak to this, is really around some of the key strategies, specifically, do you want to do an overview of this, Eva?
The three key strategies that you see under academic success are equity inclusion and MTSS. And given our data and the groups, the subgroups that we found that are, um, as a trend, um, performing at a lower rate than the rest of our population, we realized that there were some work that we needed to do around racial equity, around inclusion for our, um, students with IEPs and our, um, ELL students. And then the MTSS process is just a process of looking at, um, a universal screening tool, looking at that data, determining which kids need something different. So, it actually, in the MTSS model, could be a gifted student. It could be a domain-specific student like Laura just described. But we're not that far along. What we're looking at are kids who, um, are not on a trajectory to meet proficiency based on, you know, standards in, um, our state testing standards. And so, um, so the MTSS process is the universal screen, looking at student data, decide, deciding who's not on trajectory, and then developing, um, interventions for those students and approaches that you can use either within the classroom, in small group, or if it's a student who's really an outlier in terms of, um, level of concern, then it could be in a, a one-to-one or in a special ed setting. So, looking at what does that individual student need, what do groups of students need, and then providing it, and coming back every four to six weeks to determine whether or not the interventions are working to the level that they need to be, and whether or not they're being implemented with fidelity. That's, in, in essence, the MTSS process. And it sounds like something you would think we'd been do, you know, it sounds like that, that just makes sense, and we should have probably been doing that all along, and we have been to some level, but we don't always have the right tools and the right measurement tools, the right interventions. So, that process, we have solidified, and that we are implementing that really well in the elementary level, somewhat well in the middle school level. And really, this year is the first year that I think at the high school now, we really have that at the beginning stages, but it's, it's happening. We have MTSS teams and systems in place. So, those were three of the key strategies that we chose for, um, that'll more generalize, that apply to any, um, content area. And then, for the college and career-ready strategies, you're going to see that they're the same, um, key strategies, equity, inclusion, and MTSS. But in addition to those, we've done some specific things. I just want to speak a minute to the, to the racial equity component. The racial equity component for us means looking at, um, our own practices and the culture within our school, and how that might contribute to some disparities for our different racial groups. And so, we're working on culturally responsive teaching and learning practices and the brain, and trying to understand that better. But in addition to that, um, what kind of education are we giving all kids? So, that kids in any, um, any racial group have just a better, um, cultural awareness and understanding and about race. So, we're looking at our curriculum, and how does our curriculum inform students? And how is it, um, showing students who may be in marginalized groups, but that, um, not showing victimized, uh, any racial group, but who are the leaders in those groups? And how is that depicted through our curriculum? How are the authors of books that we're presenting kids with? How is, how is that a diverse group? So, we're looking at two areas. How are we teaching kids and, um, who may have different cultural backgrounds? Or, um, that we need to understand better our own pedagogy and what we're bringing as teachers and educators? And also, what is the education that we're giving kids?
Great, so I think I want to do just a check-in with the board here. We're, we've, um, got about 12 and a half, 13 minutes left here. And it seems like we do have folks with questions. I know I have some now, probably others do. Should we do a, a pause here and, and do a round of questions?
I'm.
Folks be comfortable with that?
Yeah, I, yeah, and I'm just happy to just keep listening to them go through the materials. I don't, I don't really have a specific question at this point.
I'm in the same place. I don't, I'd be happy to just listen, but if the board has questions, then that's fine, too.
Yeah.
I have one, and Carolyn has six. Mila?
Well, I, I do have questions, but I, I think if I could, uh, ask Eva to finish up, uh, the positive productive life piece.
Oh.
Uh, to finish up the instructional initiative, uh, part, then we can go ahead and move into the, our questions.
Does that work for everyone? I like that suggestion. Carolyn, that work?
Yeah.
All right, finish that, and then we'll dive in with a few questions.
Okay, so the positive and productive life, if you remember, that that's an area that the state doesn't measure. We don't have measures. And so, when we started that, we really had to unpack, what do we mean? We kind of all, all knew, ooh, there's this other part that we're missing. We're so focused on the academic, but there's the other part of the child that we want to develop that we don't really, we, we weren't really sure how to define that. So, we started, remember, with the social-emotional learning, so we have that component. But then we realized when we're teaching kids how to regulate their own emotions and how to be aware of their emotions and, um, be healthy in that way, um, we might be actually setting them off by some of our practices that we're using in the classroom that could be humiliating, or, you know, that aren't best practices. And so, that's where we introduced this, um, training on proactive classroom management strategies and moving away from punitive or practices that, um, don't help kids actually have a healthy esteem. And, and what we've learned through studying more about the brain is that when you do put kids in situations like that, that it actually hijacks their brain, and they can't really think. And so, it is impacting them academically as well. So, there was that component, the social-emotional learning. How do I take care of myself? How does my teacher know how to use best practices in terms of classroom management? And then the school-wide PBS is, then when I go to the lunchroom or out to recess, or I'm in the hallways, what are the systems in place? Or when I do make a mistake, and I break a rule, how does the school respond? What, what are the discipline practices? And that's the school-wide PBIS, where we're changing that, um, the climate and culture, school-wide. So, in a nutshell, those are the three areas. And then finally, we had the commitment to the community. Remember that we want all of our kids to be global citizens and to understand their role. What is a community? What's my role? And how do I get actively involved to better my community, no matter where I live or, and I understand that from a local and a global perspective. And so, you already heard that commitment to the community, um, from Patty Shelton, I believe. And so, um, in a nutshell, we have a lot of work that's gone on there, and that's very exciting, and we're nowhere near done. But that is an area that, um, where a tremendous amount of work has been done.
All right, so why don't we give Carolyn the first question, but why don't we do our regular practice that we had been doing for a bit, where each person kind of states a question, and then they can tackle them grouped or ungrouped or whatever, and if we have time, we'll get a few more questions.
So, I have a bunch of questions and a request. So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to take the ones, the report was about everything, right? So, there were a few things that are kind of specific that are in my mind, so I'm going to hold those. And the one thing that I've been just thinking about, we have just the huge overview, is, um, so we have 15 to 20% of kids that don't meet standards as we're measuring them. And we have a 95% graduate graduation rate. So, does that, what does that mean? Does that mean that 20, 15 to 20% of kids graduate, um? Okay, so my, my fear is that in some point in high school, they're not meeting the standards, but yet they are graduating. So, are you just working those last couple of years in high school on meeting those standards and not, like, actually getting to a 12th grade standard?
Okay, that's fine. All right.
So, I have. I have one question for, uh, communications and one question for instructional initiative. So, the question for communications, at, at, I, I, if I recall correctly, whether last year or the year before, we had a conversation regarding finding a way that, uh, that we could create a community engagement, uh, both way, in two ways. Whereas that, where, when I look at social media, my thinking is, is that to, almost, similar to our website, is, is, is a single way. It's, it's one way. That we, 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 we put out the informations and, um, well, community could then have the option of calling us to, to, to clarify information. If that's the case, please do let me know. And so, that, the, the two ways, uh, community engagement, I want to know more about that. And then, in regard to, um, instructional, uh, initiatives, I, um, I, I'm very appreciative of the deep thinking around educating our kids, with the, with the three areas. I, I wonder how do we go forward from here? And, and I hear it repeatedly, but I, I wanted to know if we put even more thinking into, into the, the issues that we have identified, that for the past four years, our growth is, is kind of flat. And, um, with, with all the things that we put in place, where do we go from here at this point?
And I'll add a question, um, maybe it's two, but they're, they're really tied together. When I look at the challenges, I am kind of blown away that there's nothing in here about the achievement gap. It's, it's, uh, one of the things that I feel most mystified about, about where we're making progress. So, if I were going to highlight, I would expect that to be in here. And when I think of our three, um, priorities of inclusion, racial equity, and, um, a culture of service, I see a couple nods to culture of service, primarily in the, the engaging families space, which could also be a touch on racial equity spaces. And then I see a very specific, um, piece about inclusion. But I don't really see the piece in racial equity, and I don't want to read too much into that, but I'm sort of thinking, why isn't that showing up on the, the mega-challenges? Does that mean we've got stuff in place? And when I looked at the, um, the part of the report from curriculum and instruction, the, the, um, academic initiatives or instructional initiatives, those, those pieces spoke to me in terms of racial equity, that we have a lot of really neat things going on at the high school level. But I didn't see, like, you know, high school curriculum changes, new courses, like, uh, CTE inclusion. But part of the racial equity issue is that these kids are having issues, like, from, from day one, and it's building. So, what's happening that I don't have, I mean, because this is a highlights report, what's going on at the lower levels that, that this doesn't expose us to? So, I guess really, I'm looking for what's, what's hidden here on that particular issue, because I, I assumed I'd see more on that particular one. And Chris or Steve, is there anything else you want them to touch on while they go through? All right. Can organize however you like.
So, you jumped in on the engagement, but I also, so on the community engagements, we, we still are using that process, but it is specific. So, for instance, uh, there was, um, when you think about the, uh, high school start time, that was very much in, a two-way opportunity. Wasn't just something that we pushed out. When we were doing work about, uh, elementary 18, and we had that, we had an actual committee, and we had meetings at schools, we, it very much was about the community engagement. So, those are falling into where there are really specific pieces for that. So, we haven't left that, and we actually used that chart to determine which, which one of those formats are the, the formats that are going to get us to the objective that we're needing in terms of gathering that information. So, that, that's just one piece that, I'll let Elizabeth, go ahead.
Yeah, so specifically in regards to social media and Facebook. So, when you think of our website, we publish information, and the information's completely pushed out. There's no opportunity to comment or start our dialogue. If you look at our Facebook page, there's a couple of things that people can do. They can comment. We allow them to, to rate the district, to write reviews on us. And then the other thing that we're doing is that we're also following like partners and other organizations. And so, if they, if they're doing something that we're cosponsoring with them, we also like their items, so it shows up in our feed. So, there is an opportunity, if they choose to be on Facebook, to engage with us on a different level. Whereas, you know, on the website, we'll post something. They can't really comment on it. They, they can just consume the information if they're there. On Facebook, it does allow you to have more of a dialogue, and that's kind of one of the areas that we're, we're in discussion around schools, because it does take people to manage that dialogue. Like, my staff is checking Facebook on a daily basis to look at comments, to see the messages that we're getting, and to make sure that we're responding. But that's the engagement piece. That's different from the website. Did that answer your question? It may not be engagement the way you would want, as like, having an in-person dialogue, but it is a way for the community to be able to say, hey, I think this is really great, or I have a question about the decision you made, or, or whatnot.
I'm curious, and of course, I don't want to, um, tiptoe into the operation piece in this, especially, I'm not an expert. But the, the, the piece where, when we push our information, so, ah, I'm trying to think what information we push out. We push out quite a bit of information, so the, the most recent one is a celebratory one. Our student from Odo Middle School have won a regional silent vote, and going on to, I believe, his national. If we could include, uh, a piece of, if you're interested in, in following them, this is Odo Middle School website. I mean, it's, it's a little more engaging in that sense, rather than just simply, oh, here's the informations. I, I, I see it as an encouragement for fighting more, learning more. How do you replicate that in your own kid's school? That kind of engagement.
All right, so I'm going to cut off the conversation on this one. There's only a minute left, and, and that's not a good practice. We need to make sure we manage, like, to get to all the questions. I'll skip my question, but can we get Carolyn's some attention before?
I just have a request. Um, oh, did I ask? Yeah, no, I already asked a question.
Yeah, so I want to get, I want to give them time to answer it. Yeah. So, I wanna get, I wanna give them time to answer it.
A question about the staff news and leadership news I'd like to see.
Okay. So, do you wanna give Carolyn's questions?
Carolyn, I think your question was, we have a ninety-five percent graduation rate. Does that mean that we're graduating kids who aren't meeting standard? And the way that the state defines meeting standard, there are some, there are some categories where a student could be defined as meeting standard, even though they didn't score at a level three, for example. So, that's one way a student could be still considered meeting standard by the state's definition. Also, when they are required to meet standard in certain of the state exams in order to graduate from high school, but the state does allow some alternative ways to demonstrate that, but through taking courses. So, it's a messy answer, because the answer is, they have to have shown proficiency and meet standard. However, how they define that, oh, you could have taken a course and passed that course, that doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, so if you didn't pass the exam. So, there are other ways that kids could meet standard without really passing the exam to the level that we would call proficiency.
And I think my question was also about how, like, it's biology. It's like, some of the early high school courses are the state's standard?
Right.
And so, my concern is that then maybe they're also missing.
Then they develop a plan from there if they didn't meet standard, and then they, right, they take coursework to demonstrate their meeting standard, or they retake the exam. And the pass rate at the high school level is much higher than it is at our early level. And so, that could mean, that could mean that standards are lower. It could mean, wow, kids pick it up somewhere along the way. It could mean, you know, but, so, your answer isn't a straight yes or no that they're meeting standard, but not necessarily to the level that we would have defined earlier in those.
Yeah, that's what I was.
So, if board members have more questions, since we are in a busy frame, and folks didn't get the questions they wanted, maybe go ahead and pass them on to Tim, and then the staff can, over the next couple of weeks, prepare some responses, and just send them to the whole board, and include them as an addendum to the minutes, so that it's all available for everyone. Is that all right? So, just try to get your questions, if you have any. And if you have time to do a short response on my question, not verbally, but in, as part of that, that would be awesome.
Sure. We can do that.
Okay. Short. It doesn't have to be huge. Thank you. All right. Thanks very much, everyone. That's a lot of stuff we're working on. And that takes us right into our board business.
And I still really liked the report. It was a good overview.
Yeah. It's a great overview. A lot of stuff. So, I am bringing a policy to the board for consideration that we can put up, but it's, I'm hoping we won't spend more than five minutes, and we can either decide to go ahead or not. But in talking with Tim, our meeting limit of three and a half hours is making it really hard for us, and we, to get our work done. And I talked to him about the idea of respecting staff time, and what's available, and board time, and productivity. And the conclusion we came to was, we didn't wanna add tons of time, but if we could get, if we could get just half an hour additional to the max time for the board meetings, and we would still stay at the aim of three hours. But for the next couple of months, it looks like we could really use a couple of exceptions to take us to a four-hour max time for planning the meetings. So, my question is whether or not the board would be open to that. Several people have said they were open to it in the first place, but I did wanna check in on that.
I think that there is a forcing function with a maximum of three and a half hours that does cause us to ask questions like, should we get this report as written only, which I think has been helpful. If we're just looking at some stuff over the next two months, we already have the mechanism in place to extend. All we have to do is tell the board, hey, we really need four hours for the first meeting in April, and the second meeting in May, or whatever. And then, the board can vote at planning time to extend those to four hours. So, I would personally prefer to keep the non-vote limit at three and a half, and then just understand that every once in a while, we will vote to have longer meetings.
Okay. To be clear, it really isn't just an artifact. It is an artifact of the next two months, but it is also something that we think that the calendar that we have at this point, we're like, fighting to put things off. And I do also appreciate the exercise of prioritizing. And there are several things that we're regular, like, we already went through the exercise of putting written reports and so forth. So, I will definitely be asking for the board's permission to look at April and May with longer meetings. But I do think it's something worth considering. And I think I've been the biggest proponent of keeping at three point five hours. So, I find myself surprised to be in this space. But I do think it might be worthy because of the mature place we're in with the reporting. We're at just a different place in knowing what our business is. We don't seem to be prioritizing things that are not worthwhile. So, I'm open to either way, but it is more than a short-term artifact. Mewlin, Carolyn, Chris, comments?
Well, I constantly find myself battling for time. And yes, I do appreciate the idea of prioritizing. And with our calendar, I think we really have a great structure, as far as making sure we're not missing anything, making sure that we follow through with different programs and initiatives in our system. But I find myself missing very much that opportunity I had on my very first year being on board, having that dialogue with board. I found that there are occasions that having that dialogue with board would be valuable for me, partially to really learn what you know, because we cannot possibly know everything. Each of us have certain area of interest, and somehow, we dive more into it. And to be able to learn what you know, as my colleague, is important beside hearing the report from staff. And so, I am in the space of needing more time, instead of keep fighting myself to keep myself off that time period.
Okay. We have about one minute left dedicated to this discussion, speaking of time. So, Carolyn and Chris, do you have any opinions?
I always think behind the idea of adding a little more time, 'cause I've always felt rushed since the first day I wrote here.
And what I would add to the conversation, I think you should, I think you should consider, do we take the board calendar and we stretch it out farther? Seems to me that's the obvious answer. It ought to be a four-year cycle.
I don't know what you mean.
Rather than a three-year cycle.
Or add.
And then, you add more time in.
You mean for the school visits?
Right, right. So, that you're, so you've added a whole extra year, or a half a year, or something. But you, what you demand of reporting in each individual meeting shortens, and it gives you more time to build in time for.
Yeah. The other thing I would say is, I think, there's a certain number of hours per year that the board might be able to spend. And I think treating the hours as homogeneous, meaning adding half an hour to each board meeting, is one solution to spend, to increase in the total number of hours the board spends talking about something every year. Another way would be to add an additional retreat, or two additional retreats. And to me, I guess, we've talked about this a few times over the last several years. And to me, the idea of keeping the regular meetings business-focused, and, you know, pretty focused and short, would be, I would rather have the rhythm of short, focused, business meetings, and then more kind of open-ended, interactive, in-depth, special retreat meetings, rather than just adding half an hour per meeting.
I like that proposal. I would like to make a totally different proposal to the board. I'd like to leave this as a first reading and let it hang. And I'd like to ask the board for permission to cap the meetings at four hours through the end of May, and only through the end of May, and then revisit whether, and I will not use the four hours if we don't absolutely crazy need it. And it would leave the language of trying to aim for a three-hour meeting, but I can tell you now that Tim and I have already looked at those agendas. That's not happening. So, if I could get your permission to have up to four hours through the end of May for the regular meetings, and then, we can revisit as a board whether we wanna just leave the policy alone, and have considered that a short-term thing, or if we wanna come back to this policy. Does anyone have a feeling on that?
I think for what you're proposing, structurally, probably would make more sense to withdraw this first reading, and then bring it back for first reading after the end of May, if you still wanna do that.
So, put the logistics aside for a second, 'cause I have a comment on that. Are you good with the proposal in the spirit of like?
I'm good with the proposal for expanding the meetings in April and May to four hours, if necessary.
Potentially the second one in March, but I think we got that one down. Did we get that one down?
I think we did.
Yeah, I think we got that down. But from now through the end of May, the ability to choose to schedule up to four hours. So, I'd like to make a motion that the board will allow meetings to be scheduled for up to, regular meetings to be scheduled for up to four hours through the end of May this year.
Before, so, I guess a point of clarification, we've got the meeting planners here.
Yep.
And there's nothing on here that, right now, suggests a need for that. The second meeting in March is currently listed as two hours and fifty minutes. So, is there a lot of stuff that's not shown on the planners?
I wonder if that's not up to date, because when Tim and I were talking, it was a lot more. I suspect there's an issue with that.
Well, I think we pulled, the community partner reports plan got pulled off this meeting. Would that go?
Yeah, that'll.
But that was only fifteen minutes.
Yeah, that's not gonna be huge.
Yeah, I think as we were looking farther out on what was coming and what we would hold off, so looking at April and May.
April and May, I thought were particularly the challenges. So, anyway, I've put a motion out there. Is there someone willing to second it?
I second it.
Okay. Steve, you have additional comments for discussion about it?
No, I just asked my question. That was it.
Okay. Well, yeah. Anything to follow up on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments?
I mean, the only thing I would say is, if second meeting in March is two hours and fifty minutes.
Then pull something into it.
Yeah.
Yeah. We certainly will do that if we can. So, the goal will be to stick with the three-hour max, you know, the less, the better, so we can really get focused and have time. All right. So, the motion is out and seconded. I'm gonna call the question. All in favor of allowing the meetings to be scheduled for up to four hours through the end of just May this year?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So, that's five. We're set. As far as removing this from second reading, I think this is such a small change, that it's not worth doing two more readings. So, if we decide we wanna go ahead with it, and we've had the experience, it doesn't seem like it would be worth two more meeting times. So, I would rather just call this the first reading and leave it alone. And then, we can either put it to bed and say, we're not gonna change it at the end of May, or we can say, we'll look at this for a second reading in, and kind of put it out there. Does that sound okay? Or do you have a, is that fundamentally upsetting?
I don't, I mean, that's a departure from the way we've done other policy first and second readings, where we've normally done those at consecutive meetings. The idea of delaying the second reading for an indeterminate amount of time seems like it's a little bit of a weird ad hoc arbitrary departure from what we've done before. I think it'd be cleaner to just withdraw it and bring it back.
Does anyone else have strong feelings about this? Doesn't seem worthy of our meeting time. Great. I'm gonna just withdraw this in the honor of moving our meeting forward, and we'll just go ahead, and we can do a double meeting to change it later if we need to. So, that one's done. That takes us to the superintendent's search checkpoint. Is that all right? Anyone have anything else on that? Great. So, we're at the search checkpoint, and I promised at our last meeting that I would have the script ready in case there were any points to review there. And I do have two points to review, but I wanna let the committee see what they need to use this time for first.
Yeah. So, we need a couple of things for sure. One is, you have this set of questions, which takes the revisions that everybody agreed to on Sunday. And so, I think the desire was for me to bring these back, just so that, I think, I'm not sure if you wanted to make sure I made the edits correctly or what. But anyway, there are these here. I don't think there's any reason to discuss them unless somebody sees something that doesn't match what you thought was gonna happen. It says exec session at the top. It should say executive session questions at the top.
Oh, okay.
Right. Yeah. The way this is highlighted makes it look like we're gonna talk about this in executive session, which we're not.
It's a bad one.
Yeah. So, anyway, unless somebody sees something on there that doesn't match what you thought you were agreeing to on Sunday, there's no discussion needed on this. The more substantive issue that we need to get the board to agree on is, following the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, semi, or finalist days, we have to have a special meeting at some point to actually select the next superintendent. The, when we did this in 2012, we did interviews Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Then, there was Memorial Day weekend, and we met on the following Tuesday to make the decision. Ryan from RNA is extremely unenthusiastic about delaying that amount of time. He would ideally, I think he would ideally like us to make the decision Friday night. I told him that because of the community involvement piece of this, that it would just be impossible for us to, we need to give the community time to weigh in, and give feedback, and watch the videos and stuff. So, so.
Do you say again how much time we did last time?
We ended on Thursday. We met in special meeting on Tuesday, but we had a holiday weekend in the middle. So, Chris' and my recommendation is that we meet on Sunday, and that, and then declare a deadline for comments, which Elizabeth will have to post. But the deadline would then be like Saturday night at midnight, or something like that, which gives the community 24 hours to watch the videos and weigh in. And Ryan's recommendation on this was that if we get, if we delay more than 24 to 48 hours after the last day of the interviews, that that is, and kind of unusual amount of time for the board to delay to make a decision. I think one thing that the board should be aware of is that none of the candidates are considering other positions actively. So, we're not in any sort of a time race against any other district that is gonna be potentially hiring one of these candidates away. So, that is not really a consideration. Apparently, for one of the candidates, there's some upheaval going on with replacing that candidate, and the organization that candidate is with would really like as much time as possible. Ryan was very focused on that particular issue. I personally wasn't sure how much difference 24 hours might make on that. So, anyway, Chris' and my recommendation is, Sunday is number one, and Monday is number two.
Monday is my preference.
I have a question. I have a question for staff, specifically around our community engagement. We, as a board, really value that input from our community. And even if staff put out there the end of community input is, say, midnight of Saturday, could you, would you be able to tally all those input up and make it available for board if board chose to meet on Sunday?
Yes.
So, that's just a matter of running the report Sunday morning?
Yeah. So, I have a comment, a reaction to this. We are asking our staff to be on call basically 6:45 a.m. to 10 p.m., three days in a row. I don't see the reasonableness of asking them to then do prep work on Saturday evening, and then come in and work on Sunday.
Morning.
I don't understand why we can't just do it on Monday. And I think we're also gonna be blowing off our families completely for three days, plus, we're not there tonight. So, like, we're like.
Two weeks.
Yeah. So, which, I just don't understand.
So, if we do it Monday, we should do it Monday morning.
That's, I have a meeting that I can reschedule. I'd be happy to do that.
I mean, it's fine with me. That, then, you're saying, let everyone, just let the data flow in as it does, and then Monday morning, Elizabeth can collate it.
Like, if we meet at nine or 10, they can start at seven or eight, and get the data together, and get everything. So, they're not working all weekend, and the community has the whole weekend to watch the videos. Does it lose us a candidate? I mean, I'm not interested in trying to take that chance. I just, I'm not sure I see that.
It doesn't seem like it. There's not, you know, there are other scenarios in other possible universes where there would be other districts that were actively, you know, where the candidates were interviewing in other districts, but that's not the scenario we're dealing with this time.
And I think that whatever we decide we're gonna do, then that will be relayed back to the candidates. They'll be wondering.
Yeah. And I think that's the important piece. If, if you're upfront, where the search consultant can say to the candidates, the board intends to finalize their decision Monday morning, we'll contact Monday afternoon, then they know that, so that they're not...
And I think especially if, so I already communicated to Ryan that the reason that we wanted to delay to at least Sunday was because of the degree to which we value the community input. And Ryan's response was, that's important. I need that to be able to explain to the candidates why there's gonna be more of a delay. So, I think he's already got the rationale. So I think he's already got the rationality needs.
There is one other reason that I think it would be super helpful. Last time, when we were in our debates and making our decisions, it was exceedingly helpful to be able to ask follow-up questions of staff. And so we have a higher chance, a hit rate, of being able to contact a staff member or the union president and saying, "Hey, you guys sent us this feedback, could you clarify this?" Or, you know, and, all the groups that are meeting independently, we can get clarification, we can get-
Yeah.
So that's my, that's my perspective.
The other thing I don't know, and that Ryan didn't talk about, was what impact that has on his availability or travel schedule.
Are we able to utilize the assistance of Bob?
No, Ri- Ryan has, Ryan thinks, Ryan will come no matter what. He's the only one that actually really knows the candidates. Bob had not actually, you know, he's just a-
Thought it.
-good listener who is a kind, a person who absorbed our, you know, our considerations and was a good, was a good foil for us to talk off of.
But we could potentially, if Ryan's not available on Monday, we could potentially say it would be helpful to have Bob here.
And I don't think there was ever a question of whether, I don't think we ever even asked. And we realized when the question came up, that we had not talked among ourselves, who was available Saturday, who was available Sunday, who was available Monday. So we kind of had this big hole in our planning. So if we're all saying, "We're available Monday," then we can do that.
I was trying to remember what we did last time. I thought we had done it the last night. I was like, did we just stay through? That doesn't sound right, because we had all these conversations.
Yeah, well, and Ryan, when he first asked that, he said, "So I'll come in Friday night, and then we'll, you'll work through this." And it was like, wow, no, you know what? This is a new thought. And then we started this conversation, but this is the first time we're all together to follow up.
All right, so Monday morning at 10?
Yeah.
Sure.
So you want to allow enough time for staff to do some collays in the morning?
They don't need much time, they just need to press the report button in survey gizmo, and that's about it. So we can declare the comment period to be done by like, 7 a.m. Monday, or something like that?
Yeah. Because I'm wondering how long this will take?
We can't know, it could take two hours, it could take 50 hours.
I'm only hoping it can be done by 3, otherwise I have to make all kinds of other plans.
Yeah, maybe we should start at 9.
Yeah, I mean, that is the other thing about going to Monday, is people's work schedules and other schedules.
And that would get us a maximum before we-
Yeah.
So as far as community input, is it, is it, is it better to say by midnight of Sunday, or is it better to say by 7 o'clock on Monday? I mean, I don't know.
Why don't we just, it doesn't matter.
But, but we'll leave it.
Yeah.
For you guys. And so we meet at 9 on Monday morning?
Monday to 13.
Does that work, Elizabeth? Are there any constraints that that would break on you?
So usually, I mean, if a more happen, and you see if there's a different, or we get, and it picks up again on Monday, so there's a part that says, you know, we can tie a reminder for Sunday morning on like Facebook or Twitter, and just say that it closes Sunday like at 8 p.m. And then that way, they have a reminder of the morning, you close it, it actually gives us some time to do our preliminary reports that evening, and so then the morning is just about over, and it just goes out of print.
That's good to me.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, so we're 9 o'clock Sunday, Monday morning, March 13th.
And then we need a, we need a space, Terry. Oh, gosh, where might we meet? Oh, the Baker Road.
How about someplace with super comfortable chairs?
We'll just sit in the chairs that will now be, have our permanent impressions. We'll know which chairs belong to us, because they'll be based on-
And we don't have too much of a fluctuating of temperatures.
Yeah. Chris, did we have anything else we needed for tonight? Oh, so if everybody's, if everybody is okay with the questions, I will print out questions in the morning before our first session.
Will you renumber them and stuff?
What?
You'll renumber them and all that?
I will renumber them.
Or put names, and you, are you gonna assign names to them?
Yes.
That would be helpful.
Yes.
Thank you.
Elizabeth printed this for us. These are three pieces, the, it's yours, it's your, thank you to the-
So each take one.
Observer, so you take one from each paper clip. So it's the final schedule, it's the, welcome to the observer panel, and it's the, it is the observer panel, missing one name, but the rest of them are there.
Awesome, okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Elizabeth, for that.
So, so my plan is to bring a bunch of, I assume Jeff and/or Elizabeth are printing out the short form feedback forms for the community forums and the staff and so on. So I was just gonna bring the longer form feedback forms for the board, and, which is the questions with space to write notes.
Awesome.
And then if you want the shorter form, like the one-page ones with the leadership profile on them, I can either bring a bunch, I mean, I'm gonna be printing other stuff anyway, or we can get some from staff, doesn't matter.
I would like to have one handy, whatever is the easiest way to provide that is fine.
I'll print some just, I'll print some just to make sure that I have some, okay.
So I have two process questions, or two protocol questions, that I just want to clear with everyone so I can finish the script.
Okay, so I was just going to tell you guys pieces that maybe you've caught on to or not, but the first candidate, the first and second candidates have arrived tonight, and the one who is going to be interviewed tomorrow is going to hang over and do tours on Thursday, and the one that's gonna be interviewed on Thursday arrived today so that they could do tours tomorrow.
Okay.
And so both, and then the third candidate is unable to get here until, at the crack of dawn Friday, and has made a request that Elizabeth is working on the details for, of doing some things on Saturday. So she's found things in schools, there's apparently a, something going on at the International School of Production at 2 o'clock on Saturday, and so that person is gonna hang over on Saturday because of a desire to get into schools.
Awesome.
Yeah, so thank you to Elizabeth, that's, again, that was all her-
Another weekend on her part.
Those were all details that she was sorting out.
All right, I have two quick questions if I can ask them. So during the interviews that the board has, there was, there were two questions that came up when I was working on the script with Steve, and I just want to bring them back to you guys, because we had a difference of opinion, and I wanted to just make sure that the will of the board would preside, or what have you. So the one question is, do we want to give the candidate a chance in either session, probably the closed one if we were to do it, to ask their own question, like we did? Do you have any questions for us, kind of thing? Or do we want to not give them a time to ask questions because we feel like they'll have informal time to ask those questions? I can present either argument to you, you can ask Steve and I to present our own arguments, but I'd just kind of like to get an objective sense of where the rest of you stand.
You know, I think in some ways it is significant in a, in a new way, to, you know, starting tomorrow, because they will have met with everybody before we see them. And then they may, they may have things they want to ask because of the community for, of any, because of-
They won't have met with the BEA reps yet.
Because of any of that. Right, they will have met, that's right, that's one still coming up, but they will have met with all the different groups.
Yes, in the afternoon.
And they will have had one community forum.
So here's my thought. We, we talked about that we are going to have dinner with the candidate, and, and we did say that, oh, you know, during dinner is probably, it can be light, or not. It's, it can be organic. But going through the semifinalist interview, I feel that we shouldn't offer that.
Should or should not?
I should not offer the, the candidate to ask question during the formal interview. And if, if the candidate-
When you say the formal interview, you mean either of the formal interviews?
Either of the formal interview. And if, if there's something really nagging the candidate, and, and they feel like they really need it to know, I feel that the, the time when they have dinner with us, they could, it could come out.
Okay. Carolyn?
Um-
You're entitled to whatever opinion either way.
I'm sorry, I, I, I kind of spaced a little bit of that, I was looking at my documents, and who was on the past, so you're saying we're gonna ask questions during dinner and not during the interview?
No, 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 allowing candidate to ask us questions.
Ask us questions, and we won't have that during the formal interview time.
Are you asking what I-
That's what you guys were saying.
That's, that was one of the proposals. The question is, should we? So there's a position that they have the time to ask the questions during informal interactions, there's a position that informal interactions should be just that, and that they should get time to ask their question during the formal interview, so that there is some back and forth, and that there is a respect of them as a player in the game.
So I'd say, I see value either way, I don't know that I am gonna argue strongly either way.
And I guess to clarify my position, my position is not that I don't think the candidates should ask any questions. My position is, I don't like the structure of asking our set of core questions, and then having each board member ask one question, and then using whatever time is left over, which could be two minutes, or it could be 30 minutes, to let the candidate ask questions. That's the part of it I don't like. If, if we, I mean, I think my first preference would actually be to say, when we get to, you know, 10 minutes left, or 15 minutes left, or something like that, at that point, no matter how many questions the board has asked at that point, we say, "Okay, it's your turn, do you have any questions for us?" So that we basically time-box the questions they have equally among the different candidates. And then that might mean that the board asks spontaneous questions, maybe we ask three spontaneous questions of one, and maybe we ask 10 of the next one, depending on how-
I would feel better about that than about giving no questions to the candidate. I feel like we had an inconsistency in the questions the candidates got, and they didn't get, and, like, several of them had more they wanted to ask, but they ran out of time, and some had too much time, and so forth, so I, I like time-boxing it. I don't think it needs a huge time box. I think five to seven minutes might be enough, maybe 10 at the most.
I think, so, I think that takes us back to, you know, do we just let one board member answer the question, or are multiple board members gonna weigh in? And if you time-box it at five to seven minutes, then that means basically, probably, we're gonna have one question from the candidate.
Oh, yeah, so only one board member.
So I personally would, if I, if we were gonna do that at all, I would say 15.
If we're gonna do that, I, I would agree with Steve. I still think that as far as consistency during the interview, I, I would still prefer not having that option, based on what we experienced during our semifinalist experience.
Just not letting them ask questions?
I think you're gonna end up-
When the questions are done, we're done.
I think you're gonna end up in the same level of inconsistency, in the sense that some of them are gonna get way more questions, spontaneous questions from us than others, depending on when they end. So it'll be inconsistent regardless, but we can help the consistency by time-boxing it.
Yeah, and I think too, there's, you know, there is a progression of formality that needs to happen, I think, in an engagement like this, where if we end up coming across like robots at the end of a really full day, because we've so overly structured the process, that's not helpful in recruiting the person that we actually like the most. And so the idea that we need to open up some space, I mean, I think a reasonable way to look at it is that it progresses from more formal to somewhat less formal over the course of the day.
So if we were to go in this direction, 15 questions, then we do the spontaneous questions until we're 15 minutes out from the end, and we stop them, we invite the candidate to ask questions, and then we wrap up when there's a minute left.
I like it because it's the 15-15 plan.
If I have a 15 question and I lead it, my turn, do I ask them at dinner or at some-
You'll have one more chance at getting a turn, because we have one more session with them, an open session, where the board members will also get to ask probably one spontaneous question.
Well, there's the community observer panel after that, and you're supposed to-
That's what I was meaning.
Yeah, that's not, not, that's not open session.
Oh, sorry, sorry, not open session, executive session. There's one more, and so you will still get a chance to ask your own question, so-
You might want to ask a difficult question.
And there's, so you have that one, that we can ask in exec session, and you have the community observer panel where you can feed a question-
Right.
-if you need to.
Yeah, and things might come up from a community-
All right, so it sounds like we are-
Converging?
Converging enough that, you know, the center of gravity is 15, 15-15 plan.
Well, so clarifications, that is if the candidate ended up answering their question really quickly, to the point where they have that 15 minutes left.
No.
No, it's like they just wouldn't finish-
No.
Yeah, so wherever they are, we've only got, I mean, we've got two hours for the executive session part, so, you know, we had, what, 12 questions for the-
Fifteen.
For the, for the semifinalist interviews, and that was in an hour.
Oh, yep.
And so now we've got 15 in two hours, so, and then some indeterminate number of spontaneous board member questions, so I think we'll have 15 minutes left for every candidate.
So the variable amount remains the number of spontaneous questions. It was that, it stays that.
Yeah.
Got it.
Okay, so that's done. The other question is, can we take the first minute or not? Should we take the first minute or not of the community panel closed observer interview to have each candidate just say their name, and I represent the teachers, or I represent the PSA?
Observer panel member.
Sorry, that's what I meant, yeah. Tim, do you know if the observer panelists introduce themselves to you or not, or if they just sat there as a quiet block? So I always think you-
It's not one minute, though, because there are 11 of them.
No, they don't get one minute. It, we take like-
It wouldn't be one minute total, because there are 11 of them, so it's five seconds apiece, it's gonna take longer than that.
The only thing I recall is they would say, "My name is, and I represent..."
And there was an ad lib.
But there was, but there was nothing beyond that.
Well, they, they won't ad lib because-
Who would you tell them not to?
We're starting the session with them like five to 10 minutes early, they're, they're told to come in so that they're all seated, we have something, we read to them, so we're not using up the time on that.
You just ask them, just name, I'm a group, I'm a teacher.
Yeah, just whatever group you represent, and then that's it. Are people comfortable with that? Because I know there's a time concern. It is only one hour.
I think it's stupid of the candidates, so that they know who's in the room.
I think you have to be crystal clear that we just want name and group you represent, that's it.
The script has that? If you see something, I can fix that.
And so, and so the way I would say, may, I might, the way we might start that then on day one, we won't need it on day two and three, but the way we might start it on day one is by having the board members set the example. But that means the board members have to be disciplined in saying, "I'm Steve McConnell, I'm a board member," not, "I represent District 1, I have two kids of school age, just, I'm Steve McConnell, I'm a board member."
Oh, I didn't real, I, I didn't-
Do we introduce ourselves?
Yeah.
No, I'm saying to set the example for the-
Good model at the first day.
For the observer panel.
It's fine.
It's weird.
Could we make little name tents?
They're probably gonna end up in chairs across the back of the room, I don't know if they'll have tables or not, we can't count on it.
Yeah.
So, all right, great, those are the two pieces I needed input on. Unless anyone wants to micromanage, I will finish that task with Steve, so that there's two of us, and it's not just one, and I'll make sure that at least somebody's looked at it and said, "This isn't crazy."
And you've heard my concern, which is people left to their own devices will, you know, I mean, I've seen cases where the first person's a little long in introducing themselves, and the second person gets more detailed, and the third person gets more detailed still.
We're gonna tell them, we're, we're tight on time, it, the script actually says that, "We're tight on time, we need you to say your name and who you represent, the group you represent."
Okay.
So I just want to say, as predicted, I'm friends with five people on the community observer panel already.
Well, I hope most of us know some of these folks.
Yeah.
It, it doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter, but it's just interesting.
Okay, are there any other protocol things that we have to talk about? Because one of the things I think is important is, are, like, being clear, I added a piece to the script, that gives the community panel some information, because they've never done executive sessions, so what's expected of them, to make sure that we create a safe environment, so that each of them can share, and not feel like the other person's gonna go, like, broadcast to the community everything that they've said, like, it has to be a safe space. But it also, we're asking them, as part of this safe, this space, to help us keep our community objective to all three candidates, so we're gonna ask them to make sure that they don't talk about the work until the selection is made. So, if, I just wanted to clarify if that is our expectation of each other, I know that we all have a right to talk and say whatever we want, but it's nice to have an informal agreement, that, that we're gonna try to keep this process objective.
And, and not only that, I think, I think it's important that we know that this is in executive session, and so, and so, I, I, looking at the name, I, I mean, I don't know, I, I think as we communicated with the individual who presented on, in the panels, it would probably be clearly understood.
Okay, so, are we in general agreement that we're not gonna talk about candidates outside, like, we'll let people know what's happening?
We, the board.
Yeah, we, the board, as individual members, that we will, you know, refrain from, from giving our personal opinions about candidates until the process is over. None of us can govern this, it's not enforceable, it's just an ask to help keep the integrity of the process.
That's what you said last time.
Yep, but we didn't all, like, so is everyone in on that? Are we, are we good with that? Okay?
And, and I think what we say last time--
And especially, obviously, I mean, just--
--is public.
At the risk of stating the obvious, anything on social media, there shouldn't be, there shouldn't be a trace of anything, other than, wow, it was a long day, or something, you know, looking forward to tomorrow, or something like that.
Or please come to the forums.
Yeah.
You can put that out as many times as you want.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wanted to say, like, we have worked very hard on the integrity of this process, we didn't advance, announce candidates to anyone, we waited till Elizabeth put them up for every single group, even the groups who are, like, part of our org, who, like, wanted to do research and get going, and, like, we waited, we didn't pre-announce to the press, I think we should keep the integrity of our process as sound as we could.
Yeah.
All right, that's my thing.
Until the end of Monday.
Is it till the--
Well, end of Monday, but also, keep in mind that, you know, probably, we, no, it's not, that's not complete, because what needs to happen is, the search firm will contact whoever we select, that person needs to accept the offer, and if, for some reason, that person declines the offer, we do not want the second person we contact to know that they were our second choice, so--
Yeah, to me, that's a separate issue, like, we're definitely not gonna get into that mess, but what I meant is, after everything, everything, we're trying not to sway the community, right?
Yep, and then the other part is--
But my point is, we shouldn't say anything even after we think we're done. We need to wait until we get--
Confirmation from a candidate.
Acceptance of the offer confirmation from the candidate.
And, and even after that point, executive session is still executive session, if you wanna keep our spaces safe, we don't have very many reasons we're allowed to be in executive session, there are very few, and when we're there, it needs to be a safe space, and even, it needs to be a safe space for the candidates who put themselves on the line, so, you can talk about impressions, but you shouldn't be, like, if somebody shared something with you in confidence, then that was shared with you in confidence. All right, we're supposed to talk about planning a candidate forum, because two of our positions are up for election in this next year, and, and we, we have one board member who, unless she has changed her mind, thinks she's not coming back, so, we, we know we at least need one person, and there may be others who are interested, so--
Is there a, are we thinking for a primary, maybe, or who do we think it's?
We don't, it doesn't matter, we just, we just know that people need to sign up, so if that's the case, do we wanna have a forum for them?
Yeah, we have a board policy to say we will.
Okay, so, planning for that--
It will be run by the three of you.
Milin and Chris would not attend, 'cause in, in general, we've taken the practice--
Chris would attend, 'cause she's not.
Oh, that's right, we've taken the practice of discouraging people who will be running for election from showing up.
Oh, when you say a candidate forum, you don't mean when we know who the candidates are, or--
Oh, no.
Oh, no, no, no.
I, I thought you meant that, I thought it was a little early with the election in November--
Oh, no, no, an open forum for candidates to ask questions.
You mean to encourage people.
And to ask questions and get information.
And to give them information.
Encouragement.
Yep, so, we need to set a date for that, and that would probably be in, what, what is the date by which they have to file? Do we have that handy?
May 19, that's the last day.
So, we wanna have this, April.
April is, is when we should have forum.
Okay, do we wanna set a date? Do we wanna do it, like, just after one of the, oh, marathon meetings, maybe not? Although, that might be the easiest way to get us all together, to say, like, let's do a 7:30 forum, or an 8 o'clock forum. No, is that a bad idea?
That seems off, that seems kinda late compared to what we've done--
Oh, what have you done in the past?
Before, I mean, norm, I think in the past, we'd have, like, 7, or something like that.
Okay, um, great, I think we're done.
So, filing is May 19?
The last day.
Last day, so they wanna know before the first day?
I have, personally, I have conflicts on April 10th and 11th, so ideally, like to not have it on those days.
Okay.
And the 20th.
I think we should not do it the week of the 10th, because that is spring break, and people who are interested, maybe with, off with their kids. I wonder about, what days did you say you could not do?
Well, if we take out the week of the 10th, then it's just the 20th I can't do.
How about 4/5 or 4/6?
4/5 is our board meeting, right?
No, 4/4 is our board meeting.
4/4 is our board meeting. Oh, gosh.
Yeah, either one.
Yeah.
It's, I wonder, I mean, do we wanna have it a little closer to the actual filing date, maybe?
I don't know.
I don't know, I was thinking--
I was thinking earlier might be helpful.
Yeah, I don't know.
If earlier's not helpful, I could do--
I think earlier is helpful.
20th.
I really think earlier is helpful, because if somebody choose to run--
Yep.
And especially if somebody choose to run opposed with an opponent--
Okay.
To have that time to prepare themselves for campaigning is important.
Okay.
I mean, there's, people can still run, that people can run oppose me, so they need to know--
Right.
How they can campaign themselves, and, and learning how to campaign is important to have all that time.
And we can still be accessible as a board, we can have a post up there with a link to get more information, to ask questions, whatever.
Yeah, so I--
I would, I would-- I would kinda prefer April 6th to the 5th, just to avoid two school board evenings in a row, but--
How do you all feel about Wednesdays? Because Thursdays, all these weeks, I've got track meets, and I really wanna be at the track meets.
How late do those go?
Eight, or later, I mean, they're, they're crazy, they start at four, they go for over.
I can do either day, so whatever works for the two of you, I will make it work.
The 5th can, I don't have a conflict on the 6th, I mean, either day, so.
Then, let's do the 5th. Carolyn's requesting with us.
I am requesting the 5th, and I'm looking at the 5th, and I know it's focused weekend, one night, my kid has to go to Cirque du Soleil, but I don't think that involves me, so, we don't know what night yet, so that would work, I guess.
Okay, so let's do 7:00 PM on the 5th, here, I assume. Terry, could you send an invite to the, to the whole board, Milin will probably just decline it, but at least we can just send it out, get it on the calendar, get a meeting notice, get a room.
So, we're gonna call this Carolina, Kennedy--
And, and, and have Elizabeth on board with it, to communicate.
Right, we'll, we'll talk to her.
Okay.
And I will actually, I will be out of town that week, but you don't need me there for that, so that's okay, I'm going to miss that board meeting as well.
Okay.
Oh.
Chris, can we give them your contact info if they wanna ask about the district, or--
Absolutely.
Yeah?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We could do the 19.
I have a dog and pony show.
I can't do the 19.
[laughing]
And Steve can't do the 20th, so I think this is our week, so I think we're in.
Yeah, seems good.
All right, and we haven't had huge attendance at them, so I think the real thing is to start the conversation, to get it out there that we're, like, looking, and that, that we have resources for people.
But is it about a thing, come, can't be there?
We had a good turnout four years ago, though.
Because if you work around--
We had, like, seventeen people or something, four years ago.
Was that the one we had in there?
Yeah.
Yeah, that wasn't a bad turnout.
The pity, the one I went was pity-packed of people. No, not the incumbent, Carolyn, the reason Chris there is, because Chris don't plan to re, to run for reelection.
Right, but what I mean is, maybe, since she does have this opportunity, that she could be there, and she could talk to the person about exactly--
So would, so could you.
I think that, that is true, she could do that, it doesn't work out very easily for dates, and I don't think it's worth, like, trying to find a different date.
Well, I was saying, you could work around her, so--
Plus, if they show up and they think that means they have to serve for 14 years, that might scare them off.
That's right, that's right.
All right, so we are--
All this gray hair that I'm now letting show.
I wanna keep--
Kid counterproductive--
I, I've stopped keeping track of time, and that's not good, because we're, we're getting late here.
Quite.
We're having fun.
We have the, so we've planned the date, right? And Terry, you'll send that out tomorrow, the, the calendar piece? All right, and you'll, and, is, Terry, are you gonna follow up with Elizabeth, or do you want one of us to follow up with her?
Waiting around.
Thank you.
You can make an infinite number.
Yes.
Well, will you listen?
Next week, week after, yeah, okay. Planning for upcoming equity session, so, we had some discussions about this already, and I didn't put a thing in there, but I've got all sorts of brainstorming stuff reflecting the notes we had from the last time we met. We had a planning discussion about this, I think, two meetings ago? So, this, I think, reflects some of those ideas. What are we gonna do with our hour on racial equity? What materials, background stuff do we want, and what kind of discussion do we need to have? Sometimes, we as a board need a discussion that's open, to just sorta get us exploring an area in greater depth, and sometimes, we need a focusing point, like, an object that we're trying to accomplish, so that we can actually make the project, the, the issue accessible to us, 'cause if we're all out in theoretical land, and we're all on different pages, sometimes, we don't, we don't get to the right, to a productive place. And I'm not honestly sure exactly where we're at. So, here are the background pieces I thought we would likely be able to have available. We can get an update from Shimari, who's been meeting on equity issues with different staff groups, parent groups, and student groups, so we can have a concise written summary from him, we can have a three-minute presentation from him, we can have a 10-minute, we could have nothing, but that's one source of information that I think is useful to have. Carolyn and I have attended, between the two of us, several meetings with students at Newport, individual students, as well as the Black Student Union, we could give you a very brief update about some of the takeaways from that. We could get the data, and there are many slices of data, that Elizabeth or others could pull together for us and have accessible, so we're grounded in reality, and we could, and I did wanna remind us that we have three relevant asks on the table, two of which I think are moving on their own, and don't need a whole meeting of our focus. One is the discipline procedures, Patty's working on that, I don't think that's the place for us to dig in deep, 'cause there's a whole group working on it. There's a, an ask for our curriculum materials to be in better shape, I think we can touch on that issue, but I don't think we're the experts to dive deep on the curriculum at this time, with what's available to us. And there is work being done. Equity policy, that's an ask that has come back again, and again, and again, for a couple of years, the board seems to finally be interested, and a community group or two have come together and put together a proposal, that Shimari's worked on with John, and so forth. I don't know that that's the best, like, a comprehensive community way of building the proposal, but that is something that we could talk about, maybe, how could we get to a proposal? So, this is what I've got, what would you guys like to do with this time?
Could I also add into the space to be considered? Is, when we went to legislative conference, we had an equity caucus from WASTA, and one piece that I, I felt it was, it was, it was good for me, and it was good for many of those who attended that equity caucus, was that they pulled a, a, a policy, do you remember, Chris, what policy it was? I, I can have it, but basically, they pulled a policy that currently sitting in Tom Water School District, and I don't know if you each, we each, has received a bookmark, sending from WASTA, with the questions guiding us, I think it's five questions from Portland Public Schools guiding us, as a lens of equity to look through, and so, we use those five questions, and we read the, the current policy at Tom Water School District, and we did an exercise of reading the policy, look through, asking those questions that was on that bookmark, and to me, that was quite an interesting exercise.
Would you propose that we do that with the draft materials that are available in our district, or would you propose that we do that with a totally separate district, just to orient us to thinking about that kind of policy?
I would do it with our own policy, and, and I, I would propose that the policy committee would pick any policies that we have request, is that it, it could be relatively short, because--
Oh, sorry, you're not picking an equity policy, you're picking any policy--
No, 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 any policy.
And taking an equity lens.
And using equity lens, using those five questions, and look through our own policies, and any policy.
Okay, let's hear from other folks about ways you might use that time, or thoughts you're having about this.
I think you all have better formed thoughts about how to use this time than I do, I, I'm happy to go whatever direction the rest of the board wants to go on this one.
Chris?
It's an interesting idea, what you're suggesting, we could even just use that policy, 'cause that is a model policy that everybody has, right? And I, I've got it, I'm sitting on my desk at home.
Send it to me.
Yeah.
I will try to find a comparable policy that's our own, 'cause I agree with Milin, that if we're not, if we're not looking at an equity policy per se, if we're just looking at policies, the most fruitful thing to do is look at our own, our own work, so, I would like to find one, but I assume they chose one that happens to have rich aspects, so it might tip me off as to where I can look in ours.
Yeah, well, you know, the reveal was that, oh, well, no, nobody meant that, but, you know, it was that, it was that moment, those moments where you recognize, sorry, sorry, no, no, right.
You're giving out, are they, aren't you?
Well, no--
No, that's pretty self-evident, we're gonna have aha moments about our policies.
Right, that's the reason for the exercise, and it was, it was, it was useful.
I think that's, that's a very good idea, and I just thought, cross my mind, that when Milin is on the policy committee after a video, we might find ourselves--
Have a powerful equity lens.
Going, going through all the policies that way.
Well, I hope so.
No, you guys can do it, too, I believe in you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we can, and I think we should, I think that's a great idea. Do you think that, that exercise? What do you want for takeaways from this? 'Cause to me, that's, that's like an opening educational activity for the board, to have some aha and awareness moments, but it doesn't ground us in next steps. Do you, is that as much as you want from this one hour discussion, or do you want another step out of it?
I honestly don't know what, 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 what we, the board, get out of it. I, I know that exercise was slated for 15, 20 minutes, they gave the people who participated an opportunity to express how they felt. In the, in the exercise, there were students who participated, so, I would leave it as organic as it could be, I think it would be for our own journey as well.
So, I, I think I would ask that if we were gonna do that exercise, that we also include a brief conversation about possible next steps we'd like to take with the equity policy, 'cause that's been drafted, presented to our staff, and, and there's a push to get us to, to move on that, and I, I don't know, I think that that policy is not something about just getting a policy through to take care of an issue, that's one that has to be embraced by a community, so I think having us have a short conversation about how we'd like to proceed with that might be wise.
I agree.
What were you gonna say?
I think, I don't know, I'm, I, I wonder whether during this time, I could ask some questions that I would probably, or you shouldn't have answered, too, but, our goal here, are we trying to get ourselves sort of on the same, not the same thought process, but sort of, of just being, or, I mean, what is the goal of the equity work session? We're gonna try to get some work done?
Well, that's kind of the question, is our goal of the equity work session, and my view--
Or are we gonna get ourselves more educated?
My view of the, the board's place on the racial equity priority, is that we don't have a very grounded or consistent view, that's, that's convergent. We all have noble, good ideas that are well-intended, but they're not, they're not grounded necessarily in action, and they're not convergent, so if we as a board wanna make any progress, there is value in us taking a concrete exercise to focus on something, so in this case, we'd focus on policy, and at the end of that, my hope would be, we would start to develop a lens that we could, we could use, that any one of us could use, not just Milin, that would be used, and I don't mean, like, documenting a, a, a huge tool, but just start to have a shared lens of how to look at a policy in a way that's inclusive, and, and like, wake us all up, 'cause I'm sure each of us will learn something from the exercise. And then, the second thing would be, giving us another concrete thing our community has asked for, so this is something we're doing, board down, and then our community has asked us to look at another policy, so that's ground up, that we connect on, so that in two cases, we make progress, but in both cases, the whole point is not just making progress on a thing, it's getting the board to converge, or begin to converge.
And, you know, I would add to that, this, this, this progress that we've made has been under Tim's leadership. Tim came in, he had an understanding that whatever we were trying to do before in this space of closing gaps, that we needed a Department of Equity. We didn't have one before, and, and then that has evolved, and that work has evolved, and we have backed everything he's done, and we have stepped into that space ourselves and tried to become partners in that work. And now we get, so we realize this whole, all this work has been done under Tim's leadership, and Tim's about to leave us. So I think it is a very good idea, as we take on a new leader, that we clarify that we are in this space ourselves, and this is what, this kind, this is the expectation we have, that we will have a leader who understands that, who, who understands we are a board that has an equity policy, that we expect everything to be done, to be looked at through an equity lens, and therefore, because of that, we have an equity policy. This is a logical follow-through, and it just kind of follow
A little guide, further it and not let it